Good evening. Welcome to the August 19th, 2019, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask that you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you all for being here. We are going to get started on the city council agenda. We will jump in right at item four, the consent docket. We have three items or four items on the consent docket tonight. One, minutes from last meeting, approval of a new lease agreement with tiny pause, acceptance of an electric easement, and submission of an electric emergency management performance grant. Counselors, any questions, comments, or motions on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Takes us to item five, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I do have one person signed up to speak on the homebuyer assistance program. This would be Stephanie Hesser. We do public comment on items that are not for public hearing early in the meeting. We don't have any public hearings on the meeting tonight, so we'll hear from Ms. Hesser.
Okay, well, I'm so glad that you guys allow us a little bit of time to talk to you. Well, my name is Stephanie Hesser, and I'm the Executive Director for Stillwater Habitat for Humanity. And I was really excited when I found out that you guys were talking about bringing back the homebuyer's assistance program because what it means for the population that we serve at Habitat. And just to summarize what we do at Habitat, we build affordable housing at no profit, and then we offer the homebuyer 0% interest on what is typically a 20-year mortgage. And just to, I don't know, kind of put an exclamation point on what that means for our homebuyers, we had a single mom who was paying over $1,200 in rent for her and her three girls, and after she signed her mortgage with us, her mortgage payment, including escrow, is less than $600. And so it makes a huge difference in the lives of the people that we serve. And when I did a little of the math, the $5,000 in the down payment assistance, that makes about a $20 difference in what their monthly payment would be. That doesn't maybe sound like a lot to us, but for the population that we serve at Habitat, I mean, $20 a month can mean being approved or not being approved when we take a look at their finances. I also wanted to take an opportunity just to talk about, a little bit, about nonprofits and how we add to the economy of Stillwater. I use an economic tool provided by Habitat International, our parent organization, and we, at Habitat, because we pay city sales tax, all the supplies we buy in Stillwater, you know, et cetera, et cetera, we actually add one job to the Stillwater economy for every home that we build. So if we build three homes a year, which that's about what we've been averaging, that's three more jobs in Stillwater. And the homebuyer's assistance program will help us keep building at that pace. Also, the idea of adding a home repair component to this is very exciting. We have looked at doing home repairs, home preservation, for the low-income population, but we've had some barriers, mostly financial, in getting that program off the ground. So a partnership with the city would allow us to launch a home repair program and start serving that portion of our population that works so hard to try to keep their houses together but just can't because of finances. And that's it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. We appreciate all the work that you and Habitat do in Stillwater as well. All right, that takes us down to item eight, general orders. Eight A, approved bid recommendation for geodesic domes for the Mary Main Street event. I think Mr. McClenney was on the calendar for this, but he had to step out, so Melissa Reeves will take over. We'll give you a second to find your place.
She's had about two minutes to figure out.
I thought John had a PowerPoint for you, but I'm not seeing it, so we're not going to delay the meeting that way. At the May 20th council meeting, and this body budgeted or allotted $125,000 for what we're calling Mary Main Street for this holiday season, sorry, I'm sorry, this holiday season for fiscal '19. A portion of that $125,000 was to procure five geodesic dome tents. We did solicit bids in the newspaper, the news press, city website, and direct notification of three suppliers, Pacific Domes out of Ashland, Oregon, Geo Shelters from Springville, Utah, and Bulk Storage, Inc. from Beecher, Illinois. One bid was received from Pacific Domes, and it totaled $70,182.50. So we are asking this body to choose one of these alternatives, either reject the single bid, and we can rebid the project, knowing that that might throw the whole timeline behind, or award the bid to Pacific Domes in the amount of $70,182.50. And staff does bring a recommendation to award that bid to Pacific Domes.
Counselors, questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Just one clarification. I think we talked in May that these domes would be able to be used on many other occasions.
Correct, correct. We look at this as an investment in an asset that we can use going forward.
Motion to approve to award the bid to Pacific Domes in the amount of $70,182.50.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Takes us to eight B, homebuyer's assistance program review and request to counsel for direction for the complete development of the program. C.C.-19-129. Ms. Paula Dennison.
I am great, thank you. Good evening, Paula Dennison, Assistant City Manager. Back in March, we had brought to y'all a request, actually from Habitat, and I'm glad Stephanie was here to speak with Habitat this evening, brought a request to consider some waiver of fees. That request was not approved. Instead, the discussion opened up to reinstituting the homebuyer's assistance program that the city had a few years ago. We closed it out around 2012 is when we closed it out. Since then, we have met with Habitat, with Stephanie, we've met with some lenders and some realtors. We're still taking input from them, because I know y'all have gotten some feedback from them already. The information that they are giving us, our program is going to change. We are not proposing it to be the same as it was originally, that we had started out. One of the changes is that it, right now, we're looking at it being fully funded by the city. In this fiscal year budget, there's just over $37,000 that was out of previous homebuyer grant program that was city money that we had recouped, and we have appropriated that for homebuyer assistance in this fiscal year, so from now through June 30th. Another thing is expanding the program. How it was initially is first-time homebuyer, low to moderate income. So not only did you have to be a first-time homebuyer ever, not just in Stillwater, but ever, you also had to meet some pretty tight income restrictions, so you had to qualify to participate in this program. We would still like to keep that, as you heard Stephanie say, there is a population here that when they can have assistance in purchasing a home, they want to do so. So we'd still like to keep that first-time homebuyer, low to moderate income, as one path. The second path we would like to establish is a first-time homebuyer within the corporate limits of Stillwater. That would not have any income limitation. We are considering setting a housing price, ceiling on that, but because of our job recruitment that the chamber is diligently going after, we could see a lot of new folks to Stillwater looking to purchase a home, and this might be just that little oomph that they could get something, that they could stay in for an extended period of time. And the third thing that Stephanie also mentioned and alluded to is owner-occupied, remodel, rehab, reinvestment, whatever terminology we come up with. That was one of the discussion points that we had with the lenders when we met with them, because years and years ago, we used to have a rehab program. It was a loan program. There was no release of the loan or anything unless it was 100% paid off with interest. That was for rental properties many, many years ago here in Stillwater. This would be for owner-occupied. One of the reasons that the lenders brought it up to us is because when a customer comes to them and they're looking to purchase a home, they have, they can qualify for X amount of house with as much of the down payment as they're able to give. The lender then determines which federal loan program that they can participate in. Our $5,000 in down payment and closing cost, it can restrict some of those programs that potential buyers are able to participate in unless they purchase a home and then approach the city later for that owner-occupied reinvestment, rehab, remodel, such as a new roof that they may need for their home, HVAC system for their home, energy-efficient windows for their home. Those things we have not stipulated out yet, but we do feel like that that would be a highly utilized program. It may not be the full $5,000, like the outright purchase of a home assistance, but it can be some assistance for that reinvestment in that property for the owner occupant of the house. So those are the three lines of assistance that we're looking at. We have discussed the second mortgage, and as I alluded to, that does have some limitations on when the second mortgage can be used. So Mr. Dorman and I are researching a combination deed restriction and promissory note, as opposed to just the second mortgage that could knock some folks out of some financing opportunities. So we're going to further investigate that, but it does look like it's very promising. We have discussed utilizing, for low to moderate income and any qualifiers, utilizing Habitat's income limits, because they are hitting the very low income guidelines. And then on top of that, we would use OFA's gold standard for their conventional and their non-targeted. That ranges, Habitat is just over $12,000 minimum to a maximum of just over $53,000, and that depends on the household size. And OFA's gold, conventional to non-target ranges just over $28,000 to $73,000, and that's household for qualifiers that we can assist in purchasing a home. And we think that that, establishing those income parameters, expanding it actually, and using OFAs also, will open up the opportunities for that homeownership here in Stillwater. And then finally, the homebuyer education. There are some education programs out there that are available. A lot of the federal programs use the online education programs. Unfortunately, they do not meet the needs that Stillwater has identified of really advising, teaching, helping future home purchasers understand all of the obligations and responsibilities that they have in owning a home. So staff has talked about us setting up a condensed program. Previously, it was a full-day, eight-hour class. We would have lenders, we would have extension office in, would talk about a number of things, have bankers in, have realtors, just all kinds of information thrown out there. If we can condense that to a three-to-four-hour class, offer it much more regularly, and also offer it on a one-to-one basis. So when a lender qualifies somebody and they say, "You need to go to the city, they have programs for assistance to help you with XYZ," then they could coordinate with staff to set up a time to actually teach that homebuyer education class. And we think that that would satisfy more of what we see as the needs out there in, from the education standpoint. So, all of that, long story, to get to the point of, we have started drafting our guidelines for this program. However, we wanted feedback from the council before we went way off the edge to get all three, or just knock it back down to the original assistance program that we had many years ago. Wanted your feedback to see which direction that y'all felt most comfortable with, and would like to see us go.
Thank you, Paula. Thanks for the work that you guys have done so far. This is very helpful. Counselors, questions, comments, or feedback for Paula?
I was excited to get this. I also appreciated the two gentlemen who wrote, Cade Crawford and Eric Zanatelli. Good information. It's nice to know that you have already been working with private people in town, and that's the only way it's going to work, of course.
Yeah, we've got to have them to help us with the program.
Yeah, and just in reading their comments and in hearing your comments, this is a really complicated issue. And I think that as far as, you know, I like the three options. My hope is that we, that whatever you craft elicits as many possible successful new homeowners in Stillwater as possible, in Stillwater, and that the education and/or what sounds almost like mentoring if you have a one-on-one is really top-notch. And I also, in the future, you know, when you get this all hammered down, I would love to see some investigation of even rental assistance. You know, the demographic of our country is moving toward, younger people moving toward rental, and it's, you know, I just think it's something to really consider. Good rental owners are as good as good homebuyer residents. And just one question, will you have one person in your department managing this program?
There is a primary, and there is a backup, a secondary, and both will be trained in the education component also. And then worse comes to worse, they always holler at me.
I agree, the categories here seem to make sense. Certainly, the renovation addition is, I think, valuable. There's a lot of property here in town that it would be nice to see folks be able to go in and fix up and get back to a habitable condition for some of them, and being able to help there is good. Certainly, there's a lot more to go here, I mean, funding and how all that's going to work and what this will look like, but certainly seems to be on the right track from my perspective. I will ask, you know, one of the reasons this came up, or the reason it came up, in fact, the prior action item was around waiver of fees, and, you know, for someone like Habitat or another nonprofit in town who was going to be building homes, you know, there was a request made or discussion had about whether our, some of our permit fees could be lessened or waived. Have we investigated that piece of this more? Where are we with that side of this question?
We have not. The feedback that we got when we did bring this to the council was mainly right now to focus on more the assistance for the homeownership as opposed to the waiver of any fees, because a lot of those fees are actually for hard materials that the city is paying for. There's a few that go toward, like inspections or the actual building permit, for instance. There's rights of connection to the water system to use and to take up the capacity that's available. So those have the direct connection with what the fee is and the cost to manage and operate the water or the sewer system. So those are a little less able to knock down and say what's, what could be for a nonprofit that's not for anyone else that could be building a house, or even as this proceeds in remodeling or rehabbing the house and may need to upsize a meter, for instance.
Okay. I think, I mean, I would like to see a breakdown, you know, of that when you guys do bring this back, just in terms of whether there is any room in any of those fees somewhere to help out, because a group like Habitat, you know, we want to do whatever we can to help, you know, them build more homes in Stillwater and make them available. You know, the example that was shared, being able to get a family into a home and cut their home expenses in half is a very, you know, valuable thing for us as a community, not just to help that family, but to bring more productivity and folks here who can, who can afford to live here and be part of our community. So I'd like to see a little bit more information on whether there's anything that can be done there. Counselors, any further comments on this item? I don't think we need a vote or anything, I think, unless anybody says...
Thumbs up is we keep going.
Good.
And we will bring the policy guidelines back, because we want the council to endorse those, especially since it's the public's money that is involved in this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paula. All right, that takes us down to item nine, resolutions. Nine A, Resolution 2019-14, a resolution authorizing and approving for execution in interlocal agreement with Payne County for routine maintenance of perimeter roads adjacent to city limits. This is the resolution on item we spoke about last meeting, correct?
Yes, basically what this is, is an agreement between the county and the city with regard to who will maintain the width of roads around the perimeter of the city. The county commissioners approved this agreement this morning. The map is kind of self-explanatory as to where the boundaries would be, and Monty Carnes is also here, I believe. There he is. And if you had any other questions, but this is something that's been a long time coming.
Counselors, any questions or comments on this resolution?
Certainly appreciate all the work that the county and Monty's team and everyone's done to kind of get more efficiency when it comes to maintaining these roads.
Counselors?
Motion to adopt resolution number 2019-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the resolution is adopted. Takes us to nine B, Resolution 2019-15, a resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the application of public realm requirements on certain new and redeveloped projects located within the Form-Based Code District as defined by Chapter 23 Stillwater City Code. This is the extension of the moratorium related to our discussion from last meeting within the Form-Based Code area while we continue to develop master plans for the roadways and that sort of thing. Counselors, any questions on this item? Or motions?
Motion to adopt resolution number 2019-15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Resolution 2019-15 is adopted. Item 10, ordinances. On first reading, ordinance 3438, an ordinance rezoning attractive land addressed as 821 North Main Street from RTM to Family and Multi-Family Residential District to RSS Small Lot Single Family Residential District. This is also from discussion in the last meeting, rezoning item. Counselors, questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3438 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second reading. Please vote.
We got there a little early.
With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3438 is advanced to second reading. Ten B, ordinance 3439. This is the ordinance related to the Form-Based Code, the amendment to the Form-Based Code.
The private realm provisions, and what we're asking you to do tonight is read the title, and then we want to put the actual requirements out online, let people make comments about them, and then bring them back in the second meeting in September.
Okay, so we'll be reading title on 3439. This is an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code to delete in its entirety Appendix 1 Form-Based Codes, Articles 1 through 4, including Sections 4.1 through 4.10, and all tables, and all images and tables, and creating a new Appendix 1 Form-Based Codes, Article 1, transect zone descriptions, Article 2, regulating plan, Article 3, general provisions, creating Section 3.1, contents of application and development plan, Section 3.2, pedestrian environments provisions, Section 3.3, vehicle parking provisions, Section 3.4, landscape provisions, Section 3.5, signage provisions, Section 3.6, stormwater provisions, Section 3.7, architectural provisions, transect 4, T4 design framework, transect 5, T5 design framework, transect 6, T6 design framework, Table 5, permitted use per transect, and Table 6, building configuration. Counselors?
Do we need to move it to second reading based on what?
As long as he reads the title, you can go ahead and move to advance the second reading, and then by doing that, the title is the only thing that is binding at this point. And then that allows us to make changes to the text in the event that something comes up during the interim, and then we can discuss that before you make a decision on second reading, which would be, I believe, September 16th.
So it gives us, we know we're going to enact something. We can figure out the body of it.
Gotcha. Gives us some time.
Motion to advance ordinance number 3439 to second reading.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second reading. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3439 is advanced to second reading. That takes us down to item 11, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Two items tonight, a request, executive session pursuant to 25 OS subsection 307B4 to engage in confidential communication regarding ongoing litigation styled City of Stillwater versus Block 40 South LLC, case number 2019-273, District Court of Payne County, Oklahoma, and potential litigation involving Cedar Creek Farms LLC. It is my opinion that public disclosure of either of these matters will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process this claim and/or conduct an investigation and/or to prosecute or defend any resulting litigation or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Mr. Meenickel?
Yes, sir. If you'll indulge me for a moment. Online voting is now open for State Farm Grant to fund a fully accessible shelter and restroom at Strickland Park. We're calling everyone, on everyone that we can get to vote on this item. You can vote online up to 10 times each day now until Friday. It will...
You only have to log on once to vote 10 times.
Log on one button.
Takes two seconds.
One button. It will truly improve the quality of life for a lot of our residents and make an inclusive park and a much nicer restroom than what exists there now. So we would very much appreciate everyone going there to vote on that so that we can win that grant and apply some more money to that very important project. You can follow the link to vote at stillwater.org/news, or you can find it on the city's social media accounts.
Already bars.
Everybody, yeah. Now, give us a call, we'll send you a link. Send an email.
Send us your email, and we'll vote for you.
Next item is Westwood School. We know that there's been a delay. It's been suggested to me several times, so I suspect quite a few people would have this suggestion, that the city assist the school in trying to get that project done. We have been at that for three weeks. We have had inspectors on-site daily. They have been, we have so far provided reports bi-weekly of those items that need to be done to first get the school, the teachers in to prepare the classrooms, and then get the students in. There are life safety issues there. They had a ton of rain that's delayed them, and we're trying to be as helpful as we can. They had a ton of rain that's delayed them, and we're trying to be as helpful as we possibly can. Finally, again, because there's been a lot of interest in this, I heard a news report on this today. I am told by the attorney of record of the folks in Alabama that own the property on Duck Street between Maple and Elm, that the wrecking company will be in here tomorrow or Wednesday, and should make short work of that, of those buildings.
Would have been nice to get that done before school, but we gave them the total 26, so I guess that's, that's better than nothing. Thank you for the updates. Counselor Zanotti?
We hope every student in Stillwater had a wonderful first day of school. It's been a while since OSU and Stillwater Public Schools have started on the same day. So with that said, we urge drivers to remain cautious and alert on their commute. We have a lot more pedestrians in town and school buses running their routes. If you're new to town, you can find our parking rules, violations, and ticket explainer on our website under news.
Thank you, Counselor Zanotti. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Did you know that the census influences the kinds of stores, factories, and resources available in Stillwater? Census data is used to understand consumer needs and delivering goods and services to a local market. Make sure Stillwater's needs get addressed. Make sure your household gets accurately counted in the 2020 census. Go online to paincountycensus.org to learn more about what's coming in 2020.
We're going to talk about that quite a bit over the next few months.
Yes.
As we've already spoken about it quite a bit to date. Counselor Wedlake?
Thank you. Congratulations to Lori Gale on her recent certification through the Oklahoma Municipal Court Clerks Association. Gale currently serves as a court operations specialist for the municipal court division and has worked for the city for almost six years. The Oklahoma Municipal Court Clerks Association certification offers professional development for court clerks across the state through education and training to enhance efficiency and job performance. Thank you, Lori, for your dedication to our community and to your field, and congratulations.
Thank you. Counselor Jaloski?
Yes. Stillwater Emergency Management recently completed upgrades to its radar room. This upgrade was fully funded by an emergency management grant from the state of Oklahoma and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. It enhances SEMA's ability to prepare Stillwater residents for emergencies by providing future looks at weather threats, more situational awareness, and the opportunity for increasing staff. Read more about this update and see before and after pictures at stillwater.org/news. I've seen these pictures on social media. It's quite an upgrade. It was a much-needed upgrade, I guess I should say.
Absolutely. I, I have a note to talk to you a little bit about the new online platform designed specifically for collecting input. If you've been paying attention, we've added quite a few avenues to collect more input from the citizens of Stillwater. We've got the, the polling app that, of course, just flew out of my mind what we call that flash vote. This is called Speak Up Stillwater, and it's designed to collect, you know, more of a conversational input, right, rather than just polling. So currently, you can tell us what you think about certain ideas and share your ideas on the husband street bicycle corridor, the Form Based Code area, public realm, the Strickland Park play area, and the community gathering place, and many more projects. So we encourage you to go online to speakup.stillwater.org and give your input on these topics that matter. All right.
Mayor Man.
Make an unscripted...
Unscripted.
Yep.
Uh-oh. Please.
Yes, I just feel, and I'm speaking as Pat Darlington, there's been such a, a lot of talk about guns and violence the last several weeks, and as you all know, this is an extremely complex and complicated issue with no one solution. It affects, guns and violence affect us in many more ways than what gets the headlines these days of mass shootings, suicides, domestic violence, et cetera. And whenever you hear somebody talking about this, you always hear statistics, you know, one in four, 60 in 100, 175 out of 1,000, whatever kinds of statistics. I would propose that the only statistic we need to remember is it's one out of one. Guns and violence affect each of us at some variety of levels. And as Mayor Joyce mentioned last week when we were talking about our marijuana dispensaries, there are many, there are a number of things that the state has not, does not allow the city to regulate, and in Oklahoma, guns are one of those. I am quite proud to say that last, or two weeks ago, Mayor Joyce did reach out to other mayors in, in Oklahoma and asked if we could have a conversation about how do we, how do we approach this policy-wise? And how, how do we look at this in a broad way, perhaps neighborhood relationships, social cohesion, other things? So I'm, I'm happy to say he did that. I do find, feel frustrated that as a city, we do not have the opportunity to define our culture. I live in Stillwater because it's different than many other cities in Oklahoma, and I would like to have that opportunity. But I don't know what all of Stillwater would like to define our culture as. So I would ask anyone who has any thoughts about violence, guns, social cohesion, relationships in our cities to give me a call or email me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate those words. That, there was a meeting last night that Counselor, or Vice Mayor Darlington and I both attended at Salem Lutheran Church on issues of violence in, in our communities. It's a, it's a big topic. It's something that we're concerned about. I, I send four kids to school in this town, and, you know, there's a lot of issues that go into how we keep our community safe, and I think it's our job on the council, and it's our job, each of us as members of this community, to do what we can to figure out how to live with each other better. And, and we're going to continue having those conversations and doing what we can from up here, and, and we hope that you all will, will do what you can as well. So we'll talk more about that in the future, hopefully.
Yes.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. That takes us to item 13, Appointments. We have appointments to make to a citizen committee on key performance measures, or a task, we're calling it the Key Performance Measures Task Force. This was an item that the council asked staff to put together so that we could get folks from the community to talk more about what sorts of things do we need to be measuring better, right? Is it, you know, the services we provide, how do we measure those, the services? How do we measure the, the job the city's doing? How do we measure the needs in the community? So we're putting together a task force to help. At this point, just ask the question, what should we be measuring, and how do we measure it? And then, you know, we'll talk more about what that looks like. So we had eight folks from the community apply to be a part of this task force, which is fantastic. I am going to propose that we appoint all eight of them to the task force. There's a lot of work to be done here. This isn't a, sort of a committee necessarily making a lot of decisions. It's probably going to be a lot of research, looking at what other folks are doing in other communities, and so the more hands available to do that work, the better. And, and all eight of the folks who applied certainly seem well-qualified and interested to help us in this effort. So I will read off the folks who got their applications in, and we'll move to appoint them. We have Alicia Johnson, Alan Young, Stephanie Jones, Joy Kaywood, Dora Bush, Alicia Murray, Jeffrey Dillon, and Mary McGowan. I would like to nominate all eight of these folks to the Key Performance Indicator Task Force. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for these nominations. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, those eight folks are appointed to the Key Performance Indicators Task Force. We appreciate their willingness to serve in this way and look forward to the work that they do. All right. Since just executive session left on the City Council agenda, I will recess the City Council meeting at this time. And I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for August 19, 2019. And on the consent docket... Did I miss something?
You'd like to shake things up?
What?
Stillwater Utilities Authority?
Did I say utilities or economic development?
Economic development.
What do you guys want to do next?
Just sit at the same time so it doesn't matter.
Let's do Economic Development Authority. We've got, well, it's either the, the public or the staff that have to wait to present, so we're going to go with Economic Development Authority. I already called it to order. On the consent docket for SEDA, we have the approval of regular minutes from August 5th. Is there a motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket's approved. That will take us down to General Orders. Item 5A, Presentation by OSU School of Hospitality and Tourism Management on a Tourism Study of Stillwater. Dr. Li Miao is here with a team to talk to us about tourism development. Thank you all for being here.
Yes.
Right here at the, the podium, and you can...
He's on here, right?
Yeah. The cameras will get you for the TV show, so...
We'll be on.
There's an audience of millions watching.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for us to present the tourism study we conducted for the city of Stillwater, and we are from School of Hospitality and Tourism Management from Oklahoma State University. As you can see, I am Li Miao. I'm the interim director of the school, and this is Wei Li Tao, our assistant professor in tourism. We also have Dr. Helen Q, our region professor, and Davis Chair and Director of Tourism Research here represented. We are all naturalized citizens. This is all new to us, but we are very proud that we're able to use our expertise to serve our adopted home. And we are all college professors. 15 minutes is not enough first. We are used to 75-minute interval, so I have to time myself. So we did, we proposed three studies for the city of Stillwater, just to get a sense of the tourism status. So we did the first study. We use a secondary data to establish some basic status, statistics for city of Stillwater. And for study two, we collect the primary data. We went to the airport, the hotel front desk to get a sense of what is a typical visitor to the city of Stillwater. For study three, we use the social media data to kind of triangulate what we find, just basically listening what people have to say about city of Stillwater. So for study, I think somebody is turning, or I have to do it myself. Okay, I didn't realize. I have to do it myself. So for study one, we use the secondary data, and we focus on out-of-town visitors. So we basically gauge the demand based on the hotel stay. So we want to provide some statistics that are of interest to you. So as you can tell, we look at the last five years from 2013 to 2018. So as you can see, the hotel occupancy is anywhere from like 69%, and that's the, the best year. And then, as you can see, and the occupancy on average hovered around 50%, if you will, over the past five years, and that's very stable. However, you have to realize, we added quite a few room supply. So I want to show you. So even though it's like 50% kind of occupancy, but, but the room supply did go up, and will continue to go up. So really, the indicator is the red bar here, right? You can see what are the demands. Basically, it's your number of rooms occupied times the room nights. That will give you a sense of how much demand there was for Stillwater in the last five years. As you can see, it's around, you know, over 250,000 room nights per year? So that will give you a good indication of that. And then if you look at the average room night, it's very stable in the last five years. It's around $90. And it does show a little bit like uptick, but really, I think it goes with the inflation rate. So it's actually pretty flat. If that's the case, you will see that's probably lower than before, right, given the inflation. So I think this is the slide you guys will be interested in because your tax dollars are based on the room revenue, right? So again, it's pretty stable, but I do want to point out, from 2017 to 2018, there is an uptick of 16%. So that's actually pretty significant if you look at the percentage increase and also the actual dollar amount, and hopefully, the number will go up, and hopefully, the, the trend would continue. So I think that's quite encouraging to see. If you want to see whether there is seasonality, there is a bit of seasonality in terms of demand. Clearly, as you can see, May is the month with the highest demand. No, no surprise, it's graduation season. And then you look at October, no surprise there, it's the football season. So we do have kind of a deep winter syndrome here. So if you look at December and January, that's typically pretty the slowest time for the city of Stillwater. I have more slides to show you towards the end, if we have time, but I need to move on. So what are the takeaway messages from study one? So the room supply in Stillwater is greater than the room demand, and the trend is likely to continue. And the average room rate is likely to stay flat. The room demand, and consequently, room revenue does show an encouraging uptick in 2018. So we suggest that more effort can be made to write down the graduation and football season demand. We can further drive it. Clearly, we have the room supply there, and we probably need to do something to drive the deep winter demand and also the shoulder season. And I will show you probably slides later on, but this recommendation is based on the seasonality. So Sunday is actually the lowest occupancy day. So that really shows that the weekend demand is there. It's for your leisure. So we really can do something to add more activities over the weekend to capitalize on the weekend demand. And then the weekday demand is most likely the business travelers. It's flat, but if we can add more things to the city of Stillwater in terms of the business activities, we can actually make that higher than what we have right now. And we do feel with the opening of the McKnight Performing Arts Center, it can be a positive addition to the Stillwater attractions. Given their schedule, it's not always over the weekend, so I, I think that's actually a pretty encouraging development there. So let's move on to study two. For study two, we did the primary data collection, and city of Stillwater is very helpful in helping us. So we have our research assistant went to city, the departure hall of Stillwater Airport, and we also put out the paper-based questionnaires in select hotels, the front desk in the city of Stillwater. And you will be surprised, it's quite a data collection effort. Like, it took us five months to, to collect the data because it's one at a time. So we collected 492 responses, but 14 were from the local residents. Clearly, they are not within the scope of study, so we have to eliminate them, and which, and with, we end with 478 usable responses. So we try to answer the question, what is a typical visitor to the city of Stillwater? I think you'll be happy to hear, there is no such a thing as a typical visitor to the city of Stillwater, which is a good thing. It's like everybody, right? So if you look at the gender distribution, you know, split, right, half and half? If you look at the age distribution, they're all over the place? If you look at the educational distribution, I don't think you'll be surprised, we tend to be, I guess, better educated with a four-year college degree and master's degree, but even with that, we do have some distributions in other educational categories. And then in terms of the occupant, occupation distribution, I guess this is a good thing. 73% of our respondents actually had a job, so they have disposable income to spend in the city of Stillwater. If you look at annual household income distribution, again, they are all over the place, but it seems that they are well-heeded if you, if you look at that. So again, all over the place. If you look at the demographic profile in terms of where they come from, I don't think you'll be surprised that 90% of us are from the United States, but we do have quite a representation of people from all over the, the world, given OSU is a university. So this is what I find interesting. If you look at the data, basically, 70% of the visitors are repeat visitors. It's not just, just the first-time visitor. They come back... They come back over and over again. See, forty-five percent of them have visited Stillwater for more than five times. It's pretty significant. It also has indications as to what we need to do to keep them interested and coming back. Lens of stay, this is something that surprised me also, which is a good thing. Almost sixty percent of the respondents stayed more than two days, which is a good thing. The longer they stay, the more they spend in our city. Trip expenditure, again, this is all over the place, how much they spend. We asked them to give us an estimation. Again, it's all over the place, but thirty percent of them, which is the largest share, spend anywhere from one-hundred to five-hundred dollars. Primary purpose of the trip, again, I love this slide because they are all over the place. You know, they can be visiting friends and relatives. They can be doing business. They can be doing visits related to OSU or others. But what surprised me is only three percent is agriculture-related. Because I was under the impression that we drive a lot of demand for agriculture-related events. But at least for out-of-town visitors, it's only three percent if we believe that our sample is representative. There was no reason for me not to believe that we cherry-picked those people who were in agriculture. We just didn't sample them. Travel companion, almost sixty percent of them actually travel by themselves. Okay, I guess I'll pass on to Willie Tao and we'll... Clearly, I told you that I'm guilty of spending more time than I need. But we have study three and we'll come back and answer the questions and hopefully, we get your questions answered.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Miao. So, I'm the big data guy. I'm going to talk about insights from big data. So, the purpose is just as Dr. Miao shared. We want to find, have a clear understanding of the current status of tourism in Stillwater. And also, we want to help to develop data-driven marketing strategies. So, what we did is that we developed a web crawler. We pro down all the data related to the city of Stillwater. And we use the user-generated content. Those are travelers' reviews from TripAdvisor. So, that's the data collection period over the past almost like four years. And we do use different techniques for data analysis. So, here's the descriptive analysis for top ten destinations in Stillwater. As you can see that according to ranking, Oklahoma State University ranks the number one and followed by Last Creek Safari, Botany Garden, et cetera. And overall, the satisfaction from the travelers, they left their reviews. It's from, range from four-point-five through five-point-zero. It's out of five. Travelers' satisfaction, as you can see here, it's quite amazing that the Last Creek Safari, they did pretty amazing job. They only received excellent to very good. And I try to visualize that on a satellite map so that you can kind of get a visual of like, what are these ten, like, top ten destinations in Stillwater? As you can see here, that is quite like condensed in the downtown area of Stillwater. And that might provide some ideas for the development team in a city of Stillwater. Maybe they have some ideas where to hold those event and to attract more visitors to Stillwater. And for the overall sentiment, I think they perceive like pretty positive for the, all the top ten destinations. Last Creek Safari, not surprisingly, they received more than ninety percent of the positive sentiment from those textual reviews. And the other thing that is interesting to note is that Iron Monk, that's probably only like a food and beverage place that makes to the top ten list, but they receive like the most negative sentiment because I guess that's alcoholic beverages involved. All right, so we tried to extract some intelligence from those textual reviews. And here's a visual of the word clouds of the top ten destinations. And you can see Stillwater is in the middle, campus, animals, plays, great. These are some buzzwords from the word cloud. And for professors, this is not enough. So, we tried to develop, use artificial intelligence, use the machine learning method, and we tried to calculate, develop model, what are the salient topics and key phrases emerge from those travelers' reviews from TripAdvisor? And as you can see from this figure, the number-one topic is topic number four. Key phrases like campus, beautiful, OSU. So, we labeled that as OS campus. And the second topic is topic number one. We labeled that as fun time for kids. And the other animal and garden, lake park, and last one is football games. And we'll talk a little more in the following slides. So, I want to show you some examples of what it is about for the highest, the topic with the highest possibility. So, topic four is mainly about OSU campus and how beautiful it is. So, this is about one alumni who got his or her degree from OSU and came back sharing the experience. And the second one consists of the key phrases such as kids, time and fun, like auditorium. And I used the machine to ask them to call, what is the most representable reviews? And we have more, you can see from the full report, but because of the time sake, I'm not going to read off the slide. So, the key takeaway message here is that traveler, they express in general very positive experience when visiting the top ten destinations in Stillwater. And two of the salient topics are related to OSU campus and football. And the other three topics are family-oriented activities. I think the beauty of all these three studies together is that we tried to triangulate our findings from different sources. From study one, using a secondary data. Study two, firsthand data collection at airport and also the hotels. And the third one, we collect big data from user-generated content from TripAdvisor. So, a little suggestions for the counselor and also the city of Stillwater. We may want to design some events that are suitable for families with children, really family-friendly. And they'll be, in addition to the business travelers, they want to spend more time in Stillwater. And the second one is we try to collaborate with OSU as a nation for events in the football season and which is coming. So, we hope that all these studies together will be able to provide some insights of our tourism in Stillwater. And I think we have some more time for questions and Dr. Miao will be able to answer all those.
Given this is a presentation to the Economic Development Authority, I do want to point it to you some of the slides I find very important, but I was not able to show you. But I'm just going to show you so you can read for your own reading pleasure, I guess. So... I guess this is the slide I want to show you. As you can see, Oklahoma State University, downtown Stillwater, Boomer Lake, Lake McMurtry, are where people reported they have visited. So, you can get to see the list in terms of sequence. And they also pointed out, what are the activities not currently available in Stillwater? More entertaining activities, more restaurant options, more shopping options, more facilities and better infrastructure, more nightlife options? And we also asked, what is the most impressive aspect of traveling to Stillwater? As you can see overwhelmingly, people say it's the friendliness of the people and the town. OSU and the college town vibe is a very well-managed town, a quiet town. So, it's, the theme is actually very consistent. And the most frustrating aspect of traveling to Stillwater? Inconvenient transportation infrastructure, lack of dining options, lack of entertainment, recreation opportunities. Airport service, but it's seventeen, seventeen. Words to describe Stillwater, a nice and friendly place, safe, convenient, well-kept, OSU proud, a pleasant place to visit, relaxing and peaceful. So, just to summarize, clearly, the visitor pattern shows that Stillwater is your quintessential college town. It drives the demand. And visitors are mostly repeat visitors with multi-day stays. The purpose of the visit is very well-balanced, need for better transportation infrastructure, more dining options, more entertaining recreational opportunities, and friendliness and the people are the hallmarks of Stillwater. I think that's all from us. As you can see, we are very passionate about tourism. We'll be happy to spend the rest of your time to present, but I'm sure our time is up. But if you have any questions, we are around, we'll be happy to share. I have made several copies. If you ask us any questions, trust me, you will get more than you need. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for this report. This is fascinating, honestly. A lot of really interesting information. Counselors, any comments or questions that we have at this point?
I'm just going to do to what you said. Thank you so much for the time and effort to put into what you did to make this up. It really, surprising, some information surprising and some you're like, oh, thank goodness it did show up. It does exist. We don't just think it, it does. So, thank you for that.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity. We're college professors. This is what we do. Offer this to our beloved city. Anytime, we're at your service. Okay.
I have one quick question for you.
Sure.
On the hotel room supply and demand, all your reoccupancy rates and sort of thing, is that, is your data broken down by like class of hotel or type of hotel? You know, can you break that down into...
That's a good question. So, basically, there is this third-party data vendor that all the hotels report their data to. So, we, what we need to do is to put in the zip code for them to pull up the data. So, if you ask the class, it's whoever that reported data. So, nineteen hotels in the city of Stillwater were included in the data. And you would be surprised that seemed to, I think this is what we call mid-scale. It's your Hilton Garden Inn, it's your typical residency that you see. And I'm pretty sure probably Athens was also included. In your report, we did show a list of hotels that were included in that data. And it's actually pretty reliable because the hotel companies actually use that data to gauge their performance and incentive plan. So, it's actually pretty reliable, I would say.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it's possible to see the difference in occupancy rates between, say, one of the newer sort of national brand hotels versus, you know, some of the older, you know, maybe local...
Unfortunately, you are not likely to see that kind of data because they want to aggregate all the data. So, they don't want you to be able to tell, oh, that's that hotel, that's that hotel. So, it's all aggregated.
Thank you.
Do Airbnbs report to that same?
Yeah. How does the short-term rental market factor in?
That's a good question. That's a good question. I would suspect, I'm sure the Airbnb demand and the supply affect the demand here also. But for the time being, I don't think we have that kind of data. Right now, it's corporate-based data. But that's a good question. That means in our industry, that's something we need to collect data on. I'm sure Airbnb has it. They're just not willing to share with us for free.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to say that Dr. Miao and her team were obviously enthusiastic. And I had professors like her team. When I was at OSU, I probably would have gotten better grades.
Just a pitch. We did all the study based on the out-of-town visitors, but if you want to learn more about the people who do not stay, what their needs are, basically your football crowd, we can do a follow-up study. Not to say we don't have enough on our plate, but we love to serve our city.
Well, I think that's a good, it's a good point because, you know, most of, on study two, most of that data came from the airport and from the hotels, right? So, there's probably a lot of, you know, the, you made a comment about like the agriculture-related not showing up as high. I would imagine some of that is probably more day trip, you know, that maybe aren't staying. Sure, yeah.
Just saying. Why did you say that?
Yeah. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, that takes us to item 5B, request from Block 34 Trust Authority to approve updated design and location of bocce ball courts on the block. Mr. Beckstrom, how are you tonight?
I'm great. How are you?
Good. I assume that information from the tourism study is of some interest to the Block 34 Trust.
Gut-sinch agreement here. No, it is exactly, right on, right on task, actually. Thank you so much for your time. I will try to be as efficient with my time as I can. We've been talking about bocce for some time. As you recall, thanks to some help from Councilor Jalowski, we pursued an AARP grant that got us wound up about bocce. My wife and I and my family actually have been exposed to bocce previously and knew from our own personal experience that it was an absolute blast. And so, it fit real well. We thought it was a great idea. Sadly, we did not win the grant. We applied and didn't win. One of the things, one of the aspects of that grant was it actually had a timestamp on it. So, we put together a bocce plan that we thought we could execute very quickly on the block. So, we had, we had a pretty quick timeframe to get through and not a lot of money, not a lot of time to round up money. So, we, we went for a fairly cheap solution on that. Not to say it wasn't going to be a good bocce ball court, but it wasn't going to be high-end. It was going to be a bocce ball court that would provide bocce for the city. And the place we were going to put that was over on the left-hand side. That is where the skating rink was. That area had been pre-leveled, so it was kind of a natural fit for a bocce ball court because bocce ball courts need to be leveled. That's kind of really important. So, we were going to leverage that location. That is actually not, it was an area that would work. We were going to leverage that existing infrastructure, but it actually, we, it wasn't part of the block we'd planned on using for that. And so, I'll get into that in a little more detail. So, we could make it work, but it wasn't ideal. So, what, what has happened since then is we've talked about an outdoor stage concept. And that outdoor stage concept stayed in the northwest corner. You gave us approval to pursue a concept and a location and we're doing that. We're pursuing funding to make that happen. We were also pursuing funding to make bocce and to make bocce happen. We've also gotten more information on bocce and design and what it takes to operate and run a bocce ball court. And what we found is that if you really want to do it right and you want it to last, it's going to take more than just laying some gravel on top of a milling's pile, okay? And so, so we've had conversations with the Stillwater Operations Group. The last trust meeting we had earlier this month, we talked about what was going to happen with the block. They're going to be doing a bunch of work to get it graded, to get the surface improved so people can get across it more safely and then makes it more attractive. So, more and more people will come visit Stillwater and be happy with our infrastructure here. So, so we're doing everything we can, right? So, so we talked about the millings and I, I was leaning towards the left, the west side, taking advantage of the millings. And I said, and I got some pretty strong coaching from our operations guy. Mark White gave me a good lesson in this, very politely. He's always such a polite, wonderful man. He said, Jim, the asphalt millings have got to go. If you're going to put a bocce ball court in there and you're going to try to do something really nice, you need to get rid of the millings. So, okay. I said, okay, let's get rid of the millings. Well, all of a sudden, we're no longer tied to the western side of the block. There are some reasons for it not to be on the western side of the block and we'll get to that in just a second. So, so this is what Block 34, this is the Aggie-Cad version of what Block 34 is going to look like in about a month and a half, two months. It's going to be graded, it's going to have sod, it's going to be beautiful. The one thing I didn't include was that wonderful energy feature in the southwest corner. But yeah, that's, that's what we're going to be seeing here very soon. So, let's just talk about bocce for a minute. So, we did some research. We've done, continued to gather information on bocce. This is just an example of one bocce ball court. They're, they're all over the United States. Kind of one of the standard features of meaningful bocce ball facilities is they have a real roof over them. They are totally covered. They tend to sit on concrete slabs. So, we had a conversation about, well, what does that mean? If we were going to go to a fixed structure, hard roof to give us the shade, we'd always wanted. We'd always talked about putting a shade feature over this. Even on the west side, we planned on covering it with shade because people need to be protected from the sun and it protects the facility itself. So, so they tend to be concrete. And the other nice thing about concrete is that it's extremely good for mobility. So, people that are trying to move around in wheelchairs, that have walkers, that have moving aids, this is a great thing for them. So, it starts catering to all ages better than what we had on the western side to go with the, to go with the slab-type surface. Again, this is just an interior of a facility. It happens to be in California, but this is not uncommon. It happens to be in California, but this is not uncommon. This is the standard concrete slab. This is a pretty high-end facility, so we're, we're not going to quite get there unless somebody want to kick, wants to kick in a couple million bucks. But it's all about, so they've got shade, that's super important. One of the nice things, I just wanted to get a picture of this, that this, they had wheelchair access, so they had the sides opened up so people could get, that's one of the nice things about bocce. You could play it from a wheelchair. You can play it from a walker. There's, and in fact, in Special Olympics, they actually use ramps for people that have trouble throwing. They can just hold the ball up on a ramp and let it go down. And so, so what we said, well, what does that, what does a structure look like? So, if we go to a more complete facility, bocce with a concrete slab with a hard structure, it's starting to look like a pavilion. And so, that's actually kind of where we're, where we're drifting in this conversation. So, so a hard concrete slab under a floor, a hard structure to keep the rain and to keep the shade so people are protected from the sun. I don't know about you, but we've all got friends and family that have had melanoma and skin cancer, and I think everything we can do to keep the sun off people is probably a good idea. So, we continued the conversation in the last trust meeting and have actually kind of come to conclusion that probably a better place for this, for topography reasons and for access and to fit in with the bigger plan, is to actually go to the south part of the, part of the lot, okay? We're no longer going to be chasing this, this, this Millings pile over here because that's going to get removed for the, for the sod work. And so, the thinking is we move it to the south part of the block, and you're going to see that actually is kind of where we, we're thinking this should always be. We'd always talked about having the market hall, having a structure along the south part of the block. This fits right back into where we started with the site plan. And, excuse me, I'm missing a slide here. Okay, yeah, I'm missing a slide. Ah, that's too bad. This is the older version. So, let me just talk about alternative uses. I thought I had a slide in here that showed that. The other thing that we're talking about when we talk about a pavilion is make it more than just bocce. Bocce, the thought is that it would be bocce, but conceivably bocce that we could remove, and if at some point we wanted to change the use of the structure, we can do that. We even talked about concepts of making it so the whole floor could be leveled even with the bocce ball courts in place, if you set them down into the slab a little bit, which is an option. And also have an area around bocce for other activities, and it would be a place where the city could collect to have yoga. I had somebody mention to me, you know, I wish we had a place for us to practice yoga downtown Stillwater that's covered. A pla, and a place for kiosks, for people to have food, food venues alongside, on the, on the pavilion, a place to have wedding receptions, a gathering place under, that's undercover, gets people out of the rain, gets people out of the sun. So, yeah, we'd have bocce, but it's going to be a lot more than that. I've shared this with some possible funders, and they actually have some pretty strong interest in this. One concept, again, I wish I had the presentation I thought I had here, but one thought that, that we've discussed with some of these donors is actually having a concept of pillars of the community. And you'll see these posts, yes, pillars, hold up these shade structures, that we would have actual like sculptures, or there's brick sculptures, there's different things we can do to represent the heritage of our town, city leaders, to, to use those as a place, as a way to share who we are and how we got here, talk about some of the great leaders of our town and our, and our businesses, and, and to get a sense of history. And one other suggestion that came up, and I need to talk to Sharar about this, was to use the inside of the pillars as kind of a rotating museum presentation. So, we would have like themes that people could learn about Stillwater under the, around the edges of the pavilion. So, that, so the, the, the thought, recommendation is, and what I'm requesting is, is approval to basically continue on with our site plan development, more or less like we talked about doing, with development along the southern part with a pavilion that's covered, reduces ma, a low maintenance. We're looking at a low-maintenance structure, something that's open, open-sided, so the air can get through. Again, reducing maintenance, but it gives us the cover and shelter that we, that we would like to have for the, for the site. So, the, the request is that for us to pursue this more complete facility, a pavilion-type concept for the southern part of the block, to allow us to go, secure funding for that and, and have a pavilion that is more than bocce. It would have availability, have space for food service, for events, have open sides, and, and again, a low maintenance. So, that's, that's the, that's the request. That's the request from the trust, is to get the go-ahead to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Trustees, comments or questions?
My question about the pavilion, as it's drawn on the last page, at the south side. Most of the pavilion would be over the bocce courts.
Yes.
So, there would not actually be room in there for other activities.
Yeah, only about a fourth of it would be bocce ball courts.
Oh, a fourth, okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's, in rough numbers, the two bocce ball courts would be about sixteen hundred square feet. And again, we haven't locked down on dimensions, but we've talked about something about sixty by a hundred and twenty feet. So, that would be seventy-six hundred square feet. So, sixteen hundred actually more, be more like a fourth or a fifth. So, you'd have more space around for picnic tables. When you look, think, bocce is usually a social event. You don't go there just to play bocce. You go down there to have lunch, to have a few drinks or whatever, you know? It's, it's usually a cultural, social experience. So, you want to have more than just bocce ball courts underneath the roof.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. I guess that's what I was thinking about also, Jim, is that when it was over on the west side, it left, you know, essentially three areas for hospitality or bars or other types of things. And this takes up a whole, one spot. If somebody were to come and say, you know, I want, you know, I want to put in three restaurants there.
Yeah, so I, I think the city, the city could make the decision if they wanted to at that point, if they wanted to lease that space out for restaurants, they could do that. I guess the other thing we had talked about is that maybe this is the honey that draws the bee, that maybe we get the restaurant and it pulls in next side. If you look at there, there's plenty of room there for a restaurant just to the east of us. And so, I, I think it actually sets us up well for other businesses to come in and continue to develop out the block. So, that's, that was, if we could get fund, and the objective is to get donors to fund this, I, I think we're starting to develop a venue that would be pretty attractive to hospitality companies, particularly Italian.
I really like the idea of a multipurpose pavilion. I think, I, I really, really like the idea of some sort of active use on the block, something like bocce. I love bocce because it is so accessible to so many in our community. I didn't realize until this year that over, there's over six hundred Special Olympic athletes that play bocce when they come to Stillwater for the Summer Games. And they really don't have, there is no bocce ball court in, in our town for them to practice. So, they make do and they play on the, the football fields and things like that, but I've talked to a lot of families that have said, this is what our family does. This is, you know, with their Special Olympics athlete, this is what we do. We play bocce. It would be amazing to have a spot to do that. I think for so many people, young and old, regardless of ability, it would be an amazing thing to have that active kind of use there. But I do appreciate the idea of having some shade and some other kind of more flexible space for the community to use, opportunities for outdoor furniture and relaxing. I know, I just took my daughter down to Midtown in Oklahoma City, and they've got a very makeshift, not fancy, bocce court across the street from one of our favorite ice cream shops down there. And the girls, I took a bunch of girls, we, I mean, it was just, it does draw people. It did, it does serve the restaurants and businesses that are over there. So, I, I think that multi-use aspect is a great component of it.
What the rest of the block two is going to be, it's not just this one little area being improved on. It, it actually is a larger space that the whole, I mean, so people could come and bring a blanket and sit down and have a picnic if they wanted to. It'll draw people to participate and, and be active on that block, which is what we're wanting. So, I appreciate that.
I have, I have some concerns about building a, a large permanent structure like this at that, at that location on the block. You know, the market hall concept, you know, is intended to be partially revenue generating. This is not revenue generating or not as much as what, what we would have anticipated as a, as a restaurant pad site on that part of the block. I get that, you know, the idea that, well, if we wanted to change use, it's not a huge deal, but this is more than just putting up, you know, a temporary or, or sort of makeshift, not fancy, sort of a structure. It's kind of a, a pretty, I think, major change in sort of the site plan and what we're talking about doing with the block. Assuming that, I mean, just looking at the picture where this overlays, I mean, the idea of sort of a consistently developed or consistently built market hall around those three, three sides, I, I guess I'm, I'm not sure how that fits in.
Yeah, I guess you're looking at this very differently than I am because I think it fits in pretty much with what we were trying to do, which is having a, a hard structure along that southern line there. We talked about having an open, open concepts, possibly with the garage doors that went up and down. So, we'd always thought of it being open-air to some extent, as much as possible. So...
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I understand that. I guess my, my concern is that we're talking about, well, we're going to have to figure out some way to generate revenue on this block. And, and it's difficult for me to, to envision, you know, we're still trying to raise money for the stage itself and to do the other sorts of things, and then to talk about, let's, you know, let's approve a plan where we're building a pavilion or mostly permanent pavilion at this, at this site, and then we'll figure out how to build around it. To me, it seems like we've, we've got to figure out the bigger picture of that revenue-generating corner before we move forward with, with a, a permanent kind of pavilion like this. I like the idea of bocce as originally proposed because it was, it's flat grass, we're already going to level it, we're already going to put grass down. If we can use it for bocce, great, in the meantime, but it wasn't something that was going to require a big permanent structure. This, to me, is, is maybe a step ahead of where we need to be at this point because we, we've got to figure out how we're going to commercialize a portion here to make this, the rest of this stuff, you know, viable in the long term, in my opinion. So, I would have some concern with approving a site plan that, that allows for a permanent structure here that's not part of a bigger revenue-generating piece of the market hall or, or not part of at least a plan for what that's going to, how it's going to connect to something else. I, I don't, I guess I don't, I would say, let's get it sodded, you know, let's get some activity out there, see how it's used, you know, stake out a bocce area if we can, you know, put up a more temporary sort of a shade structure if we need to. But I'm just concerned about how, you know, this is, this, this whole plan is, is really contingent at some level on finding those revenue-generating pieces to go in that market hall concept, unless you guys have got a whole lot more money coming in than, than we've, we've seen so far. Well, I mean, to, to fund these, these improvements, I mean, to fund the improvements and to fund the operation of the block in the future, you know, some, the, the idea here was that, you know, that commercialization piece was going to help do that. And until we sort of see where that's going to happen, I, I don't know that I like the idea of, of, you know, building this piece without seeing how it's going to connect to the stuff that's going to actually make some money.
Okay. I'll just share with you that, that this is actually what got people more exciting than anything else we've done on the block. So, I, I don't know, I don't know how to respond to that. We've talked about the outdoor stage. I've talked to them about bocce. I've talked to them about the pavilion, and actually, the one thing that actually got them interested, kind of interested in the block was the pavilion. So, there's a, there's certainly a range of, of views on that. I, I actually think this leads to commercial development. We, we are creating an attraction for commercial development, for a restaurant to come in here. If I saw somebody put this in here, I'd be fighting for that space right next to that because I hear I've got something that can handle hundreds of people at my doorstep.
I, I could see that. I can't see that based on, I mean, I guess it depends on what you're building here. I mean, a big sort of metal truss, open-ended pavilion does not, to me, does not look like something that is, you know, attractive to what I want to build next to.
I'm sorry, that presentation.
I've, I've got all your pictures. Yeah.
Do you have these? Okay, great.
Yeah. I mean, you know, it's a park pavilion, which is, which is fine for the purpose that it is, but I don't, I mean, it's hard for me to imagine, you know, that being something that a restaurant says, oh, I want to build a restaurant next to that.
Okay. I can...
I would say though, if I may, jump in, I don't think a restaurant right now, based, even once we, I mean, right, we have some improvement coming, we're getting the block greened up, we're getting it leveled, we still have a vacant property at the end of the day. And I think, I mean, just in what I've seen, as I've watched communities try to create catalytic development around public improvements or around public spaces, and I would say more often than not, it takes some public investment and some public, you know, we are committed to this and we are going to start it, we are going to be that catalyst before the private development happens. I think when you look at, I mean, this is on a totally different scale, but when you look at Oklahoma City and the new Scissor Tail Park, that's a huge, huge public investment that they've made. And the amount of private investment that's being leveraged all around that public investment is, is remarkable to watch. But I think it came because there was a vision for this public space, and people are drawn to what that public space was going to be. And so, I do think it's hard, it's an uphill battle to ask private investment to come in to a vacant block without some vision from us on what the public space and the public realm and the context of that public realm is going to be.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And I, I guess I would just say that the, the few hundred thousand dollars we've been, we're investing in the power lines and the sod and the leveling and the, the stage concept, which is fantastic, and the commitment there to build that, and, you know, it, it's just a, my concern about this block is that we, we put something like this up that then curtails our ability to come do some of the other private development stuff. Or at least, you know, I think we've made a public investment and we've made a public commitment to the, to the design and, and to the layout, you know, that was, that's there. And I would, I, we need to see some private interest before, you know, before we continue to go, you know, before we can commit to the idea that we're going to continue to build.
So, this, this is seventy-six hundred squeed out, seventy-six hundred square feet out of a hundred thousand square feet on the block. This isn't covering up a major portion of the block.
No, it sits on, it sits on that south, the middle of the south part of the block, which would be the ma, you know, major frontage, street frontage on Ninth, that, you know, if someone did want to come in and commercialize part of it, you would think that would be a part of it that they'd be interested in commercializing. And I think that's the, the concern I have with moving it to where it is rather than having it over on the west side because that, that frontage on Ninth would be the commercially viable piece of this block or one of the commercially viable pieces.
Yeah, I mean, I, okay.
Hi, jumping, I was going to, kind of want to tie in the Mary Main Street concept to what this is. I hear what you're saying, Mayor, and as I think about what you're presenting, we have the opportunity this holiday season to put five geodesic domes on Block 34 that are going to have an opportunity for some retail and generating dollars. And it'll be interesting to see. I have every confidence that it's going to be a draw for people to come down and do that. And so, I like this idea of maybe beginning this opportunity to see what this looks like for Mary Main Street and how it drives people down and, and gives kind of that seed of maybe retail or hospitality could work on this block and could happen. So, if we did this first part of the pavilion, I'd like to see how to... So, if we did this first part of the pavilion, I'd like to see how does that fit in with the rest of that? And then, could geodesic domes be a second step into maybe not creating that entire pavilion, but they're going to be structures that can be utilized for other events besides Mary Main Street and could possibly have some business entities that could have some retail or hospitality that could try out to see what that looks like? I think we have a bunch of different things that we'd like to put on and do on Block 34, but to talk about how do we kind of get those together in partnership just to help each one of them grow. To me, I hear what you're saying as far as to kind of just do this one part and then is that really gonna drive the rest of it? But sometimes people need to see this first part being done, and then it creates the rest of that vision that can go around it, and so, that's...
I do think there's something, and it's kind of when we were originally applying for the AARP grant, the idea of, once we got the block cleaned up, of activating the block with something that was there more consistently than the food trucks and tunes or something like that, bringing people down there, getting used to being down there, finding a reason for them to be active on the block. I think there's something to that. I think Mary Main Street will be something like that with the geodesic domes. I do think I've seen in other communities where they've taken structures like this, I know my husband's family from Michigan, they have a structure kind of like this, and they have pancake breakfasts in that pavilion with different organizations. They ice it over, he's in Michigan, so they ice it over and they do an ice skating rink in that structure. They have farmer's market and art fairs and things like that. It could be a real fluid, like flexible space, it seems like. I get, I guess, Mayor, also, that it is kind of prime real estate on the block, which is maybe challenging. I just wonder if we're going to see the development or redevelopment from the private sector until we start to activate the block on our own.
I agree with everything that you've said, and I, and Jim, that was why I asked about, you know, moving it to the south. I really like it on the west. One of my problems with the whole block as it is now, it's too big. There's no sense of place, and I think, you know, our hope is that someone develops retail or hospitality in that three-section piece that's on the east and the south. And pavilion, an open pavilion on the west, a great place for that, shaded from the west sun and an open place for other activities. If these, you know, if these other places are restaurants, they might be open or not, but I think it just creates a nice, a nice place. I really like the west. I love the Bachi Court, I love the Activity Pavilion. We have to have something covered on that park to have it be usable, that property. And, you know, if you just drive on McElroy, or Hall of Fame, rather, by Food Pyramid, there's a snow cone machine that has cornhole, and people are all over the place. I mean, it's something to do. And when people start seeing, as Amy said, that it's there all the time, I think it's definitely a first step.
Okay. So, just so I heard, you're supportive of the pavilion, you really want it to be on the west side, you want it to stay away from the southwest, southeast corner, okay?
What was the reasoning for moving it to the south rather than being on the west?
Because we started there because that's where the millings were, it was already level, and we were gonna put Bachi ball courts on top of the existing millings pile. As we got, did more research on Bachi, we were convinced, we convinced ourselves that the milling's not really something we wanted to have under the Bachi ball court, we're gonna have to dig it all out anyway. So, it's a little steeper there, it's not impossible for us to build a pavilion there. I mean, it would be the same contour basically as what the ice rink was.
Would that impede any of the utility? Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, the idea here is we're talking about changing this site plan. I mean, what you're asking us to do is approve this, this location of a pavilion so you guys can go out and secure funding to build it, right? I mean, I'm assuming, do you have funding secured to build?
We have, I have got indications of people that are in support of that.
What is the status of funding on the stage?
I can't speak, I actually don't know.
I mean, it feels to me like a little bit of splitting an effort here. I mean, if we're, you know, like...
So, we actually have a funding strategy, and we've got very different people that we're approaching for the, for the two different things. So, yeah, arguably, there's some dilution, but we have, we have a funding strategy that is distinctly separate for the two different, for the two different structures, two different things.
So, obviously, the pavilion area or Bachi courts would be, would be less expensive. Would your anticipation be based that that would be a sooner realized sooner?
It's less money, it's considerably less money than the stage plan we have, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree at all with the idea of a place like this. I just, you know, I think we've, we've got to develop that market hall concept and find some revenue generating businesses to go in there. And I think the fact that we're leveling the block, cleaning it up, greening it up, we've got the stage plan, we're gonna have an event on it this winter that I anticipate will be great, too. And we will have some opportunities to get some, some activity down there. I don't want to hamstring ourself with the availability of the revenue generating pieces of this block to actually make the rest of this a reality by approving a site plan that might get in the way of us being able to commercialize the pieces that we need to commercialize.
So, you know, we've been talking about this being parallel to the Guthrie Green in Tulsa in, to some way. There is no revenue generation on Guthrie Green. While the revenue generation they're getting is from the areas around Guthrie, and the parallel actually is, is that a lot of their revenue generation is on Main Street, and the Guthrie Green is drawing people downtown, so...
But it was, it was funded, right? It's funded and it's built. I mean, if they, if we had the money to do, if we didn't have to worry about generating money, if, you know, I mean, if we had a revenue source here to do all this stuff, I'd be all for it. I wouldn't really care. I mean, the question for me is, you know, until I, you know, until we start seeing money available to do this stuff, it's hard for me to say, sure, let's, let's cover up the block with non-revenue generating things instead of, instead of leaving...
On the logic, because we're getting funding for these things, it's not costing you any money.
I guess, Jim, I guess, you say you're getting funding for these things, but I have, have we received commitments for funding for the stage? Have we received commitments for funding? That's the part that I guess I'm, I'm not seeing that happen yet, and so, I'm not enthusiastic about, I'm more, you know, it feels more important to me to make sure we find some revenue generating pieces to go here because we haven't seen funding commitments for some of these things yet.
We just approved funding seven weeks ago.
And that's what I'm saying, I mean, let's give, let's, let's give kind of the plan as it is some time.
And the reason we're here is because we thought this was a more fundable opportunity than what we had previously.
Well, and that's, and, you know...
That's the reason we're making this recommendation.
I appreciate your recommendation, I'm telling you why I think it's, it's not the best time to change the site plan at this point personally.
Well, I'm not sure I understand. If this were the original site plan with the pavilion and Bachi courts on the west side, does that...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have as much of concern about it. I'm still not crazy about the idea of building a big permanent pavilion structure there until we have a better idea of what's gonna happen down here, because it's hard to visualize. Yeah, it should, it should all go together. But yeah, I'd be, I'd be more interested in, I mean, I was all for the idea of having Bachi courts over there on the west side when it was more of a small-scale, again, sort of makeshift, not fancy kind of a concept, and I'm all for doing that.
So, do we have consensus that on the left, west side, that would be okay? The pavilion on the west side would be okay?
I would prefer to see it on the west side. I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced that we need to approve building a permanent pavilion at this point either, but that's just me.
If the Block 34 trust came back with secured funding for this plan, would that be a better...
I think it's hard for private donors to say that they will fund if we haven't approved an idea. It's really, it kind of hamstrings them in terms of fundraising to say, like, hey, do you guys want to fund a Bachi court, or do you want to fund a pavilion or a, you know, interactive space, but we're not really sure that that's gonna happen or not.
Yes, in my mind, if they, if we did approve it and they secured funding, then that shows support for this plan, which could lead to more development because it would be action happening on this property that would, could spar more.
Yeah, I mean, I guess at the very least, I would want to see how the pavilion meshes with the market hall concept, with some sort of visualization of what this is gonna look like together. Because, you know, the picture we have here has this sort of two-corner, corner structure of a market hall with this overlaying on it.
Right, so that's... Just for context, this was a block diagram, and so, this was really, in, put together, the site plan we approved was really notional, it was kind of aerial, so there was no formal drawing or design done of the structure, so I don't have anything to tie into other than squares on the block. There is no structural design, detailed design work to tie into. So, I presented kind of the detail that we have to latch up with the, with the market hall.
So, I mean, I guess, but based on that picture, is this Activity Pavilion now the south wing of the market hall, or is it, is that south wing, I mean, based on the structure that's shown there, how do you see it connecting?
So, that shape, again, was notional. Ultimately, people are gonna come in and make recommendations on how they want to develop. This would fit in. We actually looked at one version of this that was fatter and actually would probably latch right on top of the existing width we have for the pavilion right now. You still can hook around, we can still have restaurants. If you remember the floor plans we had, were indications only, we had art galleries, we had activity centers. In fact, the, the ground floor underneath this corner here was totally open, if you remember the floor plan. So, ironically, that prime real estate was gonna be totally open, just like the pavilion's gonna be open. So, I mean, it, it, there was not gonna be retail on the ground floor here because that was to be looking through into the green, and that's the one concept we had, so...
Seems like a good place for a Bachi ball court.
We would, I, I'm not gonna argue with that. I'm not gonna argue with that. That would end up cutting into the parking lot, but, yeah. I, this, this is off to the side, you know, it allows a restaurant to come in here or some other retail. This Bachi ball court, the layout is actually big enough that somebody could put a permanent restaurant in there, a small kiosk-type restaurant could go in there pretty much instantly.
How big is that layout, again?
60 by 120 feet. 7,200 square feet is the, is what you're looking at there. Bachi ball courts are 11 feet wide by 84 feet long, so rough number, 1,700 square feet, so roughly a fifth of the total area.
So, I do think if you're looking at that south location and it would be adjacent to any sort of market hall or a restaurant facility, the design of that pavilion structure would need to be less park-like and more in conjunction with kind of the artistic aesthetic that you guys have presented for the stage and kind of, I think, right, I mean, I think you have to be able to zoom out for a second and kind of consider the whole block, whether you pull the pavilion over to the west side, which would give more room, or if you consider the pavilion more closely adjacent to some sort of market structure or restaurants or something like that, right? You'd want to know that whatever you built was consistent with the public realm of that block and that whatever the private, whatever private entities came in and that did want to invest in the block, it kept, I mean, that's, right, well, that's kind of when we're talking about form-based code, right? You're insured as a private investor that this is going to have a specific aesthetic, you're insured of the quality of the development. I think we would want to ensure, and I guess, you know, the stage seems the farthest along in terms of the aesthetic, I suppose, and design, so it seems like we would want to be really consistent with that so that we're ensuring folks that would want to invest from a private perspective in the aesthetic of that...
Agree completely.
...structure.
So, I would suggest that we, again, personally, I would, I would like to see more on how this ties in to the larger market hall concept and more on what the design of it would actually end up looking like and how it would tie together before I could reasonably be okay with locating it where you're suggesting it be located. That's, that's my two cents here. Any other comments or questions on this item, trustees? Or is there a motion of some kind?
It makes sense to have it. I mean, it, it has to all go together, but it's so hard when you don't know what it's going together with, and you have to start someplace.
You do have to start someplace.
And we're not, I mean, it's not like we're seeing private investors drive to this block to say, let's do something here.
I don't disagree, I guess that's part of my concern with, with taking, I mean, this concept had, you know, the open space in the middle and it had two, the idea of two retail or resident, or restaurant sort of spaces, and basically what we're doing here is we're taking one of those spaces and repurposing it before we've even, you know, seen a concept on the other things.
If they moved the Bachi over and the Activity Pavilion to the left, not so much an Activity Pavilion since we don't know what, you know, if, you know, I don't know, Garfield's Restaurant came in and they built something the way Garfield's builds and it didn't go at all. But there are those kind of cool sailcloth-type cover, you know, that shade places everywhere. I mean, Tulsa Airport driveway, whatever, that wouldn't be like a permanent structure that would begin to create that space, that place going down, you know, the bollards are over there on the west side, you know, the snow cone truck could just plug right in and...
I mean, what we've done is we, we walked ourselves past that to get full water protection. The shade structures don't provide protection from rain, which is one of the things you're trying to get away from with these facilities, so our recommendation is go with full coverage roof over the, over the area.
But I do think you could do that in an artistic...
I totally agree, yeah.
And still, and still economic way.
I totally agree with, with the alignment of the design with the outdoor stage. I totally get that, and I think that was the objective from the get-go, that this was gonna fit in with the downtown, downtown Stillwater architecture, that it was gonna line up with the outdoor stage. In fact, that's one of the reasons that I just picked a brown color that kind of similar to the outdoor stage so that we would have aligned-type styling. That, that was the vision, so it would be, it wouldn't be a totally distinctly looking, different-looking structure, it would look like it'd fit in.
And I could see it moving to the west if we just really feel like we need to keep our options open, but I also feel that making, making this commitment to say, let's see if we can bring and activate this block, I don't, I think it will be challenging to bring the private investment without activating the block in this way.
That was, that's our, that's, that was where the trust got.
We have a lot going on that's gonna happen in the next six months on that block that could help people see what could actually happen and have them come to that area and maybe even have a vision that we haven't even seen yet. even seen yet, so that's.
Timeline-wise, though, this, this thing's not going to be built for.
No.
No.
I mean.
But I think it's planting the seed. I think it's helping, I mean, I think we're going to be having some things happen that will encourage people to spend time.
I think you see too, when you start to make this kind of public, I mean, you've seen it in Tulsa at the Guthrie Green, you see it in Oklahoma City, you see it, I mean, even downtown Bargosville, Oklahoma is investing in a public space downtown. And you're, what you see is people start speculating on the land around it and saying, we want to be a part of that, we want to be next to that, I want to open my restaurant there.
That's absolutely the case, but those are, those are planned and funded and built together. This is, what we're talking about here is, is sort of piecemeal and, and changing the site plan as we go, go along and saying, well, maybe we'll just put this here instead of over there. And, I mean, it's hard to compare. I mean, I completely agree that we've got to invest in this sort of a, a facility and a, you know, I've been a proponent of doing this on Block 34 from, from the beginning, but it's not a, you know, it feels like we're sort of just kind of going, okay, well, now we can do this and maybe now we can do that and maybe it'll spur some, you know, it, it's hard to compare that to Guthrie Green or Scissor Tail or, you know, those sorts of places where they've come in with a unified design from the beginning and funded it and built it. And so my concern is that if we, when we go in this piecemeal fashion, we do limit our options going forward. And, you know, if, you know, we talked about sodding the block and doing what we're doing now with the power as active, you know, allowing us to activate the, the space and, and bring more stuff to it. We haven't even done that yet. And so, you know, the, the summer, the winter wonderland, what, I'm sorry.
Perry Main Street.
Perry Main Street.
It's all right. Gee, there's so much happening.
You know, that's, I think, going to be a first, you know, good indication of, of how we're able to, you know, activate the investment that we are making now. I am nervous about committing to more, you know, a, a single piece of this kind of construction without, without seeing more of how it's going to fit into the, to the whole picture. I'm, I'm concerned about the idea that we go, okay, well, we've kind of got this stage concept, which is wonderful, but we're still working on funding it, so now we're going to build this thing down here and then we're going to see what happens after that. And this is not going to end up very cohesive if we go piece by piece. And so it's, you know, I, I just, I just don't think, I don't have enough information at this point on how this whole thing fits together to say, yes, let's change the site plan and build a permanent pavilion on the south side of the block. Again, that's my opinion, and I think we've.
How about the west side of the block?
I, I prefer the west side of the block and I'd prefer it to be a less permanent, you know, just a shade structure of some kind at this point. I certainly see how a pavilion like this is useful, but again, it's not, I, I don't, I, it's hard for me to envision how this fits in. I mean, we, we talked about this site plan a lot to get to the point we're at, and then to come back now and say, well, we're kind of switching it up. I, I just, I don't have enough information to, to be comfortable to do that. So, yeah, I would prefer west side. Yes, I would prefer less, less permanent from a shade structure standpoint. But the request, we do have a request on the table from the trust tonight, and I think we've, we could probably talk about this for the next two hours, and I'm trying to be respectful of, of time.
Would you feel more comfortable if they were able to bring back a, a more detailed plan of what that would look like, is how, how it would fit into what the rest of that pavilion would look like? Is that, I mean, we say piecemealing, I get, I get what you're saying. It's piecemealing in more than one way, but if there is a way that this is designed to be a little bit more consistent with that design overall, so that this one piece isn't necessarily.
Sure, yeah. I would, at the very least, need to see how it fits.
A more conceptual, so you're able to see if it is consistent with it.
I mean, I, we don't have architectures on staff, architects on staff. What, what we can do is if, is if you say, look, we want it consistent with the architecture of the outdoor stage, we can work to that and get that funded. I, I think it ends up with the same result. That's what we're trying to do, is make sure it fits with, with the architecture we've already approved.
Was the expectation, and I apologize, this is just my lack of history with kind of the earlier site planning, was the expectation that the market hall would be one, like a structure that was funded from just private, I mean, would, when you look at the market halls, it's displayed on there, and I know it's conceptual, but it's kind of one structure, and then you would have restaurants occupying spaces within that structure? What was the expectation for funding of that?
Mixed funding. It was mixed funding. It was not envisioned that it necessarily be funded by one entity, that it would be a conglomerate. We looked at multiple sources of funding for that. I don't think there was any public funding considered, but it was considered to be a mix of donor funding as well as private funding. So this fits in with what we had envisioned for the, the market hall, which was a mixture of private and, and, and business funding to make that happen. I mean, we're, there's still 15,000 square feet of ground floor space to wrap around that corner and go up the north side. I don't see how this is a great depart, in fact, it's one of the reasons that we thought this would be a good fit because it actually tied into the site plan we had in mind, and it's, and it supports the activity. We talked about Italian restaurants, we talked about a beer garden, we talked about lots of different options for this space. I mean, if you looked at that, that bocce ball court restaurant, they had a restaurant and they had the, these outdoor bocce ball courts adjacent to inside bocce ball courts.
Well, I think we're seeing a lot of that as concepts for restaurants and things right now, is those activity, activity use, active uses and restaurant space. I guess I was, what I was wondering is if you, like, right, if you have that market hall concept as you have it pictured, and you were saying that'd be a great place for bocce in the corner there, is if it would open up the site planning for more flexibility if you located kind of over in that corner and used this as kind of a centerpiece to a bracketed market hall? If you were envisioning like a breezeway or something like that, do you have a public, like, centerpiece use there that wouldn't hamper the potential private investment and then would also kind of keep? I think my one concern with moving it to the west is that you could end up with a structure over there that was kind of funky in comparison to the structure over, like, the situation of the orientation on the block, especially if you ended up with kind of a rectangular structure over there. It could end up kind of messing the aesthetics of that block up a little bit in terms of the linear features. That's getting way in the weeds of the site plan, but.
Yeah, I just, I think there's too many questions about what this is going to look like and the effect it has on the rest of the block. Personally, to make, to approve a site plan change at this point, I would, I would need to see, to see more. But I would also like to move on from this item if we can, because we have a whole other meeting to get to tonight.
What exactly would you like to see?
I'd like to see how it ties to the market hall and, and what it does to the potential pad sites available for restaurant. Where does that go? You know, I mean, if, if the middle was going to be open and the south and east were going to be where we had, you know, the availability of, of retail or restaurant space, how does that change with this? How does it tie in with the larger picture of, of the market hall concept? What, what does the structure look like? I mean, there are, you know, five or six different examples of what these structures could look like. I, I don't, you know, some of them.
I understand.
I understand. And, and I guess, you know, like we did with the stage, I mean, we kind of would want to see what you're talking about building, you know, before, before we make a decision to say, yeah, let's build a permanent concrete floor, full roof, multifunctional pavilion. I, I just, I just don't think there's enough information here to make that, to make that decision. And it needs to be more fleshed out.
I can imagine your frustration because that's what we did say, an open-air, covered, concrete-floor marketplace.
When did we say that?
That's what it's, I mean.
That's part of the, the market hall.
Yeah.
Together. Well, yeah, absolutely, but, but we're talking about one little piece of it, and how does it fit with the rest of what we're talking about? Because the market hall, we also talked about having retail or restaurant or, you know, revenue-generating space, and this doesn't address how, how that affects any of that. I mean, so, yeah, I, I understand that we've had this conversation a lot, but this is a fairly major change in what the site plan has been described as previously.
I don't agree, but that's, I mean, that's your opinion, yeah.
We can talk about it more offline, I suppose, but it, it seems like a large change to me. So, again, there is a request from the Block 34 Trust on the table, or not on the table really, but they, they've made a request here that we need to deal with one way or the other. And we have other things to get to tonight, so I would, if there's, well, I would entertain a, a motion or something along those lines for this item. Dr. Wedlake has said nothing to this point.
Go for it.
One, I'm battling a migraine, so I'm slightly aphasic right now. If I was a better neurologist, maybe I wouldn't be suffering from a migraine right now. But I've, I've, I've tried to take into account everything everybody's said, because honestly, I didn't know where I, where I sat on this before this meeting started, because I, it's hard not to get excited about things moving forward. But Mayor Joyce's points are taken into account in that, that we need to do these movements responsibly. My concern about the commercial portion of this block is actually on the lower end because one of the things we talked about in the original site plan was actually having, one possibility was having a completely open first floor and retail and possibly even residential space on a second floor, which could fit into this kind of site plan. I will say, however, that, that I tend to agree in that it would be nice to see where we stand as far as, as the funding of this goes. That is, that is a concern I share with Mayor Joyce in that, you know, it, this, this pie in the sky stuff is excellent, and it's, and it's, like I said, hard not to get excited about, but the end of the day, this stuff has to be paid for somehow. And it would be nice to see where those funding sources sit. And like you said, Jim, I know, it's only been seven weeks, for crying out loud, so it's, we're still in our infancy in, in working this out, but before we made a big change to a site plan like this, it, it would be nice to have a little bit more concrete information. Like I said, conceptually, I'm actually okay with this. I don't, I don't really mind the concept here, but making a sweeping change like this without having some other pieces in line is where my concern lies right now. And like I said, I've, I've, I've not said anything to this point purposely, because before this meeting, I was, I was very torn on, on where I sat on this. But after hearing everybody's remarks, I, I still kind of fall in the middle, but I would say that I would need some more concrete information before making a big change like this.
Just really quickly, what kind of capability does, do you all have? I mean, like, you don't have a design budget necessarily.
We have zero budget.
So.
And, and, any, any, any money we need, basically, student team designed the outdoor stage for free.
Right.
Okay, we've been very resourceful, I would argue, with what we have available. The city of Stillwater has helped where they, where they can. They've got very limited resources, well. We don't have design capability. We, we, we've been, we've got this outdoor stage concept that we, we've been able to carry forward. I've shared some of these images with people that have, have some interest in the block and, you know, the, the interesting dilemma we have is that without support of the council on going forward on things like this, there's no way we're going to get funding. And so we're basically throwing the anchor out when I've got feedback that said, this is something we're interested in doing, and I'm hearing, well, we're not, we need more information. I'm going to be, I'm, I'm going to be, I think we're all going to struggle to get funding because people are going to wonder, does the city council really think this is real or not? Are they really serious about developing Block 34 or not? So that's part of the, the balance that we're, we're dealing with. There's noise in the community about the reality of this, and we're doing everything we can to keep it alive, and that's the reason we're here today, is to keep this thing alive and moving forward, so.
Is there a way we could word a motion to pursue the funding of the construction of a pavilion with final plans for what it looks like to be approved by the, I mean, I still think this is a good idea and I think we need to start somewhere. And I really, we have to trust that the Block 34 Trust is going to uphold the plans that we have, you know? I think, like all good plans, they have to be changed and altered, and you are showing that to us right now, and you potentially have some funders that may do this, and I'm, I'm okay with it.
I agree. I think it's important to try to, to start, especially you have some, there's just momentum that can happen, that really can set things up, you know, going. But that, like, the larger site plan, I think, is something, I don't know how we get you guys there so that we can say, we love the idea of this pavilion, but we love it here because it maximizes both the public and private realm on the block, which is what I, I think we were trying to do from the beginning. It's hard to do that with you guys when you don't have a budget for site planning necessarily, to come back to us and say, all right, we've got everything on the block, here's exactly what it's going to look like, and here's all the pictures to go with it. I don't know, as you fundraise, if we, if we said, go forward and fundraise pavilion, if you would take some initial dollars of that fundraising to do that site planning and design? I don't know if that's reasonable. I'm just trying to brainstorm how we get to a cohesive design and site plan that we feel is maximizing both revenue and the public realm and also keeping you moving forward on the momentum that you guys have started. I, I, I don't know how we help you, I don't know where, I mean, it's like they need a little bit of something to say, like, let's do the site plan with some, a little more detail than like a block of building here and a block of building there.
Something that has some style.
Yeah, I mean, you have the conceptual, the stage and everybody, you can, right, that really captures you. It just, I feel like if they could come and say, here's the block with that stage and this pavilion, and it's, you know, the pavilion is a centerpiece that the whole market hall, you know, tears off of, or the pavilion is here, you know, spread in this west side and corner with the market hall. I mean, how are those going to interact with each other, maybe? I'm just trying to figure out how we help them bring that to us so that people feel more comfortable in that it's not a piecemealed approach or a changed-up plan, that's like, people are excited about this today, but, and we'll fund it, so let's do that.
Well, in my mind, we, we have that. We have what the vision is for what this block needs to look like. The change is just in the location of where this bocce ball is going to go, and if there's an opportunity that funders would be willing to fund something to get this started, I think we need to move forward with it.
Well, I think one of, one of my concerns there is, is that, that, like Mayor Joyce said, you know, we've, we've talked about the site plan along, I mean, since I've been on the council, we've put a lot of thought into this. You guys have done a heck of a lot of work on, on what this site plan, what our vision for this was. And if we, if we move forward with this pavilion, I mean, you're cutting out a third of the possibility of that, of that, you know, this southern edge of the, or block, not necessarily cutting it out, but making a big change to it. To a plan that we've, we've discussed and discussed and tweaked and, and reworked and all of that stuff. To me, the centerpiece of all of this is the stage. And, and when we were looking at, at, at the funding timelines, the stage was really the, kind of the next big piece to this. And I guess part of my concern is, is why don't we focus more on that as a means to get people to Block 34? And I understand it's, it's more expensive and may take some more time, but is that not a better course of action than changing the plan that we've talked about so much? I mean, I don't know what the right answer here is, I'm just, I'm just throwing out ideas, but to focus on the stage as the centerpiece to start bringing people in, building up that foot traffic, and then you can start building up the commercial aspects of this block. I mean, it, that's kind of how I envisioned this when we initially approved the funding timeline for, for this concept. for this concept. I mean, I don't know. I'm just... That's... One of the concerns I had is that we've talked about this a lot, and now we're making another change to it. And like I said, I don't know that that's necessarily a bad change. I just want to make sure that we're doing it responsibly, and we're thinking about all the stuff we've thought about before.
Does the location, is that specific to your... Does that... If we said, "We like the idea of some sort of multi-use area pavilion," would that give you enough to start fundraising to then come back to us and say, "Here's what we have, and we think it'll fit here best"?
Yeah. I mean, if you... If I get endorsement, if we get endorsement that we support a pavilion, we support a multi-activity area like this, that's probably something that we can get funded. We thought we were actually in the site plan. That's the reason we put it here. So, my head's just going crazy trying to recalibrate, because we put it on this right where it was. We moved it from the west side, because that's where the Millings Field was. When we were looking to go with permanent structure, it dropped right back on top of the site plan, which we'd already approved. So, it fit into the structural plan we had for that area. So, my apologies if that came across as a big change. We had not locked down a floor plan for that feature in the southeast corner there. So, this is a permutation, I would argue. It's not a breakaway from the site plan we had in mind, but I get the points. So, we don't have architects, we don't have designers on our staff, so it does make it a little different... Difficult for us to come forward with real-time drawings, so...
Jim, just to be clear on that point, I mean, is your envisioning, then, that you, if this pavilion went up with bocce in part of it, that the rest of it could potentially still be a restaurant site?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
In the existing pavilion? Or, I mean...
Well, I think there is an... There's optionality in this space for people to come in and put a restaurant. I mean, we could... You could build this, and somebody could come in, a week after we put it in, said, "Hey, I'd love to put an Italian restaurant in this corner of the pavilion." And you could say, "Yes," and you would have a restaurant in there with the bocce ball courts. This enables that. This fits into our whole idea of enabling commercial development.
Yeah, I guess I... I mean, I don't... It's difficult for me to imagine somebody coming in and saying, "I'm going to put a restaurant under your open-air roof."
There's kiosks. There's food kiosks. We see them all the time. There's something less than a food truck. You see them in airports all the time. In fact, if you remember, we had pictures of the market hall. We had food kiosks as examples of possible businesses within the market hall.
And those are the pictures. I would love to see what... How this is... How does it fit into those pictures we saw? I mean, we did see pictures of a rendering of what that market hall would look like, and that's where I don't understand how this fits with what we saw there, that I would like to see.
Okay. It... All right. I'm not... I thought we already did that when we got the site plan approved, but, okay. I can bring them back. I just don't know where that takes me. Am I back here in a month to present this again with those pictures? Or, I need guidance as to what my action is.
That would be my request, yes, that you provide some more design cohesion with prior, you know, with what we've seen before, and with the floor planning and that sort of thing that we have seen before, because we... There was more detail and more pictures with... When we did this site plan originally. And I'd like to see how it fits. I mean, it just... It's difficult for me to imagine how they go together. That's just me. You guys?
Would it be helpful in the interim for us to approve the idea of a pavilion? Or, do you need to... I would make a motion that we approve, or we approve the request to locate bocce courts in a pavilion on a part of the site of the block to be determined, based on a more comprehensive look at site planning on the south and, well, the southern end of the block, I guess, south and west end of the block.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion?
So, just so we're clear, so we're going to go ahead and approve the idea of a bocce court covered by a pavilion, site unknown. And when are we going to hear this again? What, I mean...
We've got to look at the agenda.
Sept, January 6th and 19th, at the next meetings. We're committed next week to building examination.
Jim, does that give you enough time to throw some stuff together as far as site planning? I mean, what do you need from us as far as time?
I think so. It's going to be pulling back the work we did from the recommendation, January 2018, and shows how this fits in. We can't do engineering in that amount of time. What... Yeah. I mean, ultimately, what we need is the ability to go fund and build, because we can't get funding if we can't build it. And so, but yeah, we can provide more, I guess, detail on utilization of this space.
I think it'd be awesome to be able to address Mayor Joyce's concerns about what the availability of developable property would be. And then, I think, just showing how this concept can integrate into the market hall concept that was originally proposed. Because I... Approved. I think if you can show that integration, whether it's from the conceptual pavilions that you're showing us, or how that might integrate into the market hall concept, and then also give us some numbers about the developable space that's remaining on that property and its ideal location for private development, I think that will make it a lot easier to show that there is a comprehensive cohesive site plan and expectation for the block.
And if there's been some interest in funding this, I'm hoping that this will help, yeah, keep that healthy.
So, we have a motion and a second on the table. The motion is to approve the idea of bocce courts within a pavilion, some location on the block pending further information regarding site layout.
He said this to the original conception.
You guys got that over there?
Yeah, we got it.
I can add a few more words if we need to.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to one, the motion carries. Thank you, Jim. All right. That takes us down to reports from officers and boards. Anyone have a report for us here at CEDO?
I have to report, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the CEDO meeting. Please vote. A vote of five to zero. Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting is now adjourned. I will now call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for August 19th. On the consent docket, we have regular meeting minutes from August 5th. Trustees, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the minutes are approved, or the consent docket is approved. Item 5A on General Order is Utility Rate Study Presentation from Avant Energy.
Good evening, trustees. Melissa Reames, Deputy City Manager. I'd like to introduce Lisa Vetter and her colleague, Jo Lynn Reins. They are here this evening from Avant Energy, and they're going to give you a high-level presentation on the rate study that they are performing for electric, water, and wastewater.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I know it's been a long day, so it'll be pretty quick, but I appreciate your attention. I'm Lisa Vetter with Avant Energy, and if we can get this slideshow going. So, this is the core team. Jo Lynn Reins, my colleague, and David Niles, the Vice President, isn't here tonight. Avant was selected through a competitive process. We responded to an RFP. We actually designed the distributed generation rate for you guys last year or the year before. We're headquartered in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I personally have over 30 years' experience. Avant's been around, I think, 50 years. And they are unique in that they actually manage two municipal power agencies in Minnesota and northern Illinois. So, we do a full range of consulting services for all utilities, and we're multidisciplinary. These are some of the studies that we've done recently. One of the most similar to you guys is Gainesville, big college town with multi-utilities. But we've also done a lot of work in Oklahoma. This is our project organization. I'm the engagement lead, but I'm also going to be the electric lead. Jo Lynn is leading water and wastewater. And we have a staff of support. We've done the initial data request, and I just have to commend your staff. They've been amazing to work with, so we're really excited. The goals of the study are to keep your rates competitive and predictable. You want low rates, but you want to be maintaining your infrastructure, and you want to be, you know, providing for the future, providing customer service, all things that you value and do really well. And you need predictable and stable revenues. Right now, especially with electric, even though you're growing on your system, conservation and other factors are keeping sales kind of lower level. So, this is a challenge for all our clients. A cost-of-service study is the way that you figure out which customers should pay what. You know, it's trying to fairly apportion your costs among customer classes based on the actual cost it takes to serve that customer class. Part of the reason I'm here today is because we're kicking off the study. Usually, you wouldn't see me till the end. So, we wanted to come and get to know you, let you know what we're doing. We're going to be here the next couple of days, working with your staff, interviewing your staff, collecting data, and then we'll probably be back in a month. And then, the study is scheduled to wrap up around December. So, for us, the key study considerations are that each of your utilities has had a varying length of time since the last study was conducted. Electric has not had a study in quite a long time. There's also a lot of things happening in the market. You get your power from GRDA. They've just changed their rate structure, and so we want to make sure that your rate structures anticipate those changes appropriately. Also, deployment of smart meters can be a big blessing for utility, but you've got to incorporate that into your planning. On the water and wastewater side, you've had a more recent study, but there's a lot of infrastructure changes. There's a lot going on in that system, and Jo Lynn is leading that study for us. So, basically, a cost of service is conducted in three steps. First, you develop the revenue requirement, which is your budget. What does it cost you to provide service? The second step is sorting that into equally different buckets. So, first, you start by functional sorts, then you classify them between fixed and variable nature, then you allocate them to customer class. It's just a bunch of sorting, but at each sort, you're trying to get closer and closer to the cost to serve that customer, so that the rate that you charge that customer lines up. And then, finally, you do the rate design. This schematic kind of shows how the study comes together. So, right now, if you look at the kind of brown boxes on the lower left, that's where we are right now. We've just taken all your data dump, your consumption data, your raw data for each of the utilities, and we've cranked them through your retail rate structure, and we're trying to figure out what your data tells us about the revenue you're collecting. The top boxes are the financial information, and that tells you what your finance department says you're collecting. And bringing those two numbers together usually only happens in a study like this. And so, if, over time, you haven't done these types of studies, you can get a big D-link between what you think you're collecting from certain customers and what you're actually collecting. And this study is a great way to assess that. On the right side is kind of where you guys come in, because we can do the math, we can do the technical stuff, but ultimately, rates are a lot of policy decisions, and that comes from you guys. So, that's why I'm here tonight, to let you know what we're doing and your role in it. This illustration kind of shows that there are no free lunches, as you were just discussing about bocce courts, right? You know, everybody wants low rates. Everybody wants to pay less, but you want to have service, you want to have... Pay your bill on your phone. You want to have all these other conveniences, and they come at a cost. And so, you have to collect the money you need to operate your system. In the past, we got away with a lot of... Everybody got what they wanted, because there was growth. There was always growth. We were always selling more and more utility services. But that's no longer the case. So, you have to make some hard choices about where you're going to apportion costs and how much those costs should be. This is the overall schedule for our study, and as you can see, the council presentation, August 19th, that's where we are today. And then, finally, in a study like this, communication is the key to success. In this day and age, you have to communicate to your stakeholders. You have to be able to explain to them why they're paying, what they're paying, and what they're getting for it. And so, one of the, you know, one of the things in public power especially is communicating your value to your stakeholders, because public power, you know, brings a lot of value, and for so long, people weren't communicating that. They took it for granted. And so, we're seeing a sea change in the relationship between utilities and their customers, especially public power, and to show all the value you bring your community. So, that's why I'm here tonight, to communicate with you guys, because we want you to be able to communicate to your constituents. And that's my contact information. So, if there are any questions, I won't belabor this.
Thank you very much. That was really helpful. It's nice to see the process, and, yeah. Any questions on the rate study?
I'd like to say that I loved the simplicity and the clearness of the presentation, which gives me great hope for the end result.
Yes. Understand that.
Yes.
We don't generally understand most of what those are.
Well, that's a change.
Real quick, also, Avant will be doing a two-hour rate study workshop for staff tomorrow, but we're going to be videotaping it, so that you... And we'll put it out on the web, so that you and the citizens can get out there and educate yourselves as well.
That's great. Communication piece, I think, is really helpful, because it's hard to communicate sometimes why we charge what we charge and how the rates are all different, and so that'll be great. We appreciate it. 5B, emergency purchase for industrial substation transformer for Stillwater Electric Utility, SUA 19-32. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. In May, the transformer at industrial substation failed, excuse me. Failed, yeah. Failed affecting approximately 3,100 customers, including four industrial customers. Staff is currently working on the substation transformer replacement project, which includes the replacement of the transformers at Boomer Lake Station, Central Substation, and Hospital Substation. Unfortunately, it didn't include industrial substation. For the strep project, staff competitively bid and awarded six substation transformers to the lowest responsible bidder, Pennsylvania Transformer. These types of transformers take approximately nine to 12 months to build, deliver, and commission. The failure of the industrial substation transformer forced staff to adjust our project strategy to ensure electric service reliability and grid stability. The failure causes reliability concerns related to the utility having two of its six distribution substations offline at the same time. That's a total of three transformers that really puts us in a bind in two ways. One, it doesn't give us the flexibility when we have outages to transfer load around efficiently, as well as we can have low voltage issues when we stretch a long distance away from the substation transformer. Under the current project... Under the current project's schedule, this will be the case in the fall, when we take Central Substation offline, and in the spring, when we take Hospital Substation offline to complete its renovations. So this would have a negative effect, a negative impact on reliability and grid stability for the reasons that I explained. We kind of had to put our heads together, come up with a different strategy to eliminate that need of to have two substations off at one time. Staff has requested and received a quote from Pennsylvania Transformer to build a seventh transformer identical to the ones that we are currently under contract with them to put at industrial. The strategy is to purchase seventh transformer as an emergency purchase, and then use one of the transformers already in production to put at industrial, and then use the rest to fill in at Hospital and Central. Additional engineering will be required for the installation of the transformer at industrial substation. That is part of the project cost that we're asking for tonight. The total cost, including construction, there will be a construction piece, is estimated at approximately $1.2 million, and funding for this project is available in the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund pending approval of the attached budget amendment. I have a recommendation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. Before I read, it's kind of lengthy, so I'll be happy to answer.
It's just always nice to read, "Funding is available."
Yes, done. Thank you for that.
So did just one of the transformers fail at industrial?
Yes, sir. Industrial substation only has one transformer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All of our others have two.
I was going to say, because we're replacing both at the others?
Yes, sir.
So we'll just be replacing the one at this?
Yes.
And how much will it push back the timeline for the rest of that project?
If we are approved tonight, it shouldn't affect our end result, which is to be done by June of 2020. So June of next year, if we can slide all this into the schedule, we will make that deadline with all and be done with the project.
Okay.
Okay.
What's your recommendation?
Okay, thank you, sir. Staff recommends that the trustees approve the replacement of the industrial substation transformer and authorize the following. Pursuant to 60 OS 176I, find that an immediate emergency exists, which findings shall be entered in the Journal of Trust Proceedings by reason of which purchase of a transformer is necessary to avoid loss of life, substantial damage to property, or damage to the public peace or safety. B. Authorize staff to execute an emergency purchase contract for one electric substation transformer from Pennsylvania Transformer in the amount of $585,589, and authorize expenditures from the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund up to $673,427 by approval of the attached budget amendment. That price includes a 15% contingency. C. Authorize staff to enter into a professional service agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald for the engineering, design, and procurement support required for the industrial substation transformer project upon satisfactory terms, satisfactory negotiations of the terms and conditions, and authorize expenditures up to $223,315 for the professional services from the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund. And again, that includes a 15% contingency for the engineering.
There's no construction cost in any of that?
Yes, sir. We have released bids for the construction cost, and here in the next couple of weeks, I'll be back with a bid recommendation for that.
Under the Public Trust Act, you can buy the transformer, and you can purchase the professional services without going out to a competitive bid. And since you just went through a competitive bid process with the other six transformers, you have a very recent rate quote, so it picked a good time to go out, for lack of a better way of saying it. You do have to make the determination that the emergency exists to comply with the Public Trust Act requirements, and then the rest of it, as Lauren just said, we go through competitive bidding process for the construction component, and that brings it to the $1.2 million total that he mentioned.
Trustees, any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to accept the staff recommendation to approve alternative one. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. Please vote. We'll vote five to zero. The recommendation's approved. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you for keeping up with all that stuff. Item 5C, review of 2011 marketing agreement with utility service partners, Doing Business and Service Line Warranties of America, and request for guidance as hard to move forward regarding that agreement. Mr. Millis?
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. I'm Bill Millis, Water Utilities Engineering And the first slide just shows a typical layout and responsibilities of water and sewer service lines. Wanted to tell you tonight about a marketing agreement, which the city entered into with Service Line Warranties of America in 2011, allowed the use of the city logo and letterhead to offer warranties to City of Stillwater, Water and Wastewater customers at a 10% discount. And what the company does is generally, twice a year, send out solicitation letters promoting the warranty service. And it's a private warranty between the company and the customer. The city's not a party to the warranty. We don't enforce it or require it. This next slide shows just some of the same statistics that are in the report about the number of letters they send out, the number of, one thing that's interesting, the number of policies, over 600 water service line policies and over 500 on the sewer side. Now, there's a lot of overlap there, so that's not, you know, some customers hold one of both policies. There's the number of claims, and the bottom bullet is about the number of claims denied since 2011 and the reasons for those.
There've been 32 water line claims since 2011, when this went into place? Okay.
All these numbers, I might add, are reported by Service Line Warranties of America. We don't, obviously, wouldn't know, you know, everything that's going on.
Yeah.
And all their numbers, so they report them to us.
These kinds of issues don't come to us, right? This is all on the customer side of the meter.
Correct.
They're dealing with it.
The same thing with, you know, number of policies, number of letters that go out. We don't know, so we depend on the company to...
Do they have a requirement to report this to us on a regular basis, or do we have to go ask them for these numbers?
We ask for it. There's not a specific reporting requirement, but they've always been forthcoming when we ask for an update or specific information.
Okay. Do you have the costs? Do you know how much it costs for the warrant?
Very roughly, I do not. I think it's like $40 or $50 a year for the water.
Does anybody have one?
And $60 to $70.
I've never bought it.
For the sewer.
If I may, Mary, the impetus for bringing this is that this was done a very long time ago. I believe the date was 2011. The city entered into an agreement with this company. There is confusion every year when these letters go out as to whether or not this is a municipal program and whether it might be required. And as a result, we felt it wise to bring this to the trustees for guidance.
Yeah, I mean, I've had people ask, you know, I get the letters, and they're very official-looking.
Yes.
They had, the last one actually had the City of Stillwater logo.
Yeah, they used the logo.
They always have. The agreement includes the use of city logo and letterhead, and the letters have always gone out under a city signature. You know, now it's my signature, but it's always been under a city signature. And there is some confusion. Most of the calls we get are either confusion about the, you know, the other companies that are competing. Is this this company or one of the other ones? Is it a city program or not, and which service people are signing up for? Some of the things we've tried to clarify, we always approve the letter before it goes out, and so we've tried to, I think we've done a pretty good job making sure that it's clear in there that it's optional if you read the letter, and that it's not obligatory, it's not a city program, but there is some confusion about that sort of thing.
The company has a very good reputation. They were originally endorsed, and I believe the reason the city originally entered into this is because it was endorsed by the National League of Cities, I believe. But we're endorsing a specific business. There are a number of these out there where they provide the same service.
And the agreement says that they give us a 10%, they give our customers a 10%, at least a 10% discount?
Correct. Yeah, the agreement says they'll give a 10% discount. Right now, it's about 15% on the water side and like 28% on the wastewater side.
And that's because we allow them to use our letterhead.
To make it look official.
And make it look official.
I mean, that's the basis of the agreement. As they use our letterhead, and they give our customers a discount.
But notice it's non-exclusive too, right? So technically, we could have other companies that did the same, offered the same warranty on our letterhead?
Yes, it's not exclusive.
So it's a little complicated legally, but I mean, it is a project that, like you said, the NLC is behind it. CMAO pushed it as well, so...
Well, I don't think, I mean, it's, I guess, it's not a bad deal for the customer, although it looked like there's not that many water line claims. It seems like there's a lot of people paying for that policy that aren't using, aren't seeing much, you know, there's not a whole lot of work there to warranty.
Well, and that's one thing we always, when customers do call to ask about it, we always remind them, you know, this is not, we're not saying you need this. We're saying you should weigh your options and compare different companies, you know, do your research just like you would with any purchase, and decide whether it's something you need or not. There's no budget impact right now. There's no cost to the city besides staff time to review the letter, check data. The city also doesn't make any money off of it.
Yeah. I mean, this, to me, seems like something that it would be good to put out on one of our engagement platforms and ask people what they think about how this works. I mean, it doesn't seem like a bad deal. It doesn't seem like people are being taken advantage of. I just think people don't, sometimes don't understand, so maybe it's an education thing that we need to do versus, you know, actually doing something about the service itself. But I don't know what people think about it. I don't know how they...
I wonder even how many people understand that they have a their side of the meter, part of the infrastructure, that they don't realize that the city's not responsible for all of the infrastructure.
They won't until a...
They won't until they know.
Yeah, you don't know until, yeah.
I mean, just even that graphic that you started with would probably be really great for people to take a look at and understand.
That's the thing. We've had the chance to explain that to a lot of customers, and we honestly don't need this agreement to do that. You know, we could create a page and put it on the website that explains this and does, you know, cover some of the same advantages that are gained from the program. It's not putting everybody's, I guess we can do it with a mail or two, but that is one advantage of the program. The main advantages I see are the discount to the customers. There is the opportunity for local plumbers to participate that maybe is a little enhanced by our relationship, the marketing agreement. And the biggest downside is the, you know, the appearance of an endorsement.
I think it's quite misleading.
It is.
Yeah. And if you understand that it's not, that we're not getting a kickback, that's what it looks like, and that you don't have to have it, and you do have the, and that there are other companies who do this, you could shop around. You know, it's just, the most comments that I get are, you know, what's the city getting out of this? You know, how much the city gets? Do I have to do this?
I will say that that's pretty clear in the letter, because I actually just got one of these, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, with your signature on it. I mean, I've obviously read the whole thing. It's actually very clear in there, but you have to take the time to read the entire page, right? So...
And that was at the beginning. You know, they offered a payment for each policy that they gained, and we said, you know, we're not trying to make money off of our customers. We're trying to provide a service to the customers. So that's why we didn't accept any payment and made sure it was clear in the letter that we're not, you know, making money from it.
Is it clear in the letter that they're getting us at a discount because their relationship with the city?
I don't, I don't recall that, so I think it may not be.
I don't remember. I will admit that I don't think I read the whole thing.
Is it an annual renewal of that agreement, or what's the term of the agreement?
The policy or the agreement between us and the...
The agreement between us and...
It's, it was a one-year agreement, which renews automatically unless one party or the other, I think maybe provides 90 days' notice to terminate.
Yes, but not to continue.
Or to not renew.
Prior to the next year's renewal, the way I read it.
There's no money involved in it, so it's not subject to the debt limitation requirement, so it can renew automatically.
Well, I think that 90 days...
So with 90 days' notice, we have to give them 90 days' notice before the next year's renewal period?
I believe that's correct.
When is, do we know the renewal? What's the renewal?
This is dated September 22nd, so...
So we're past that.
We're past the 90 days. I mean, I would certainly, I think there is potentially some benefit to the citizens from us being in a relationship like this, but I think, I don't know, I'd like to learn a little bit more about how people feel about it and what we could do to change, to make sure we're being clear about it, do a little bit more education with folks. So at least maybe when we get the questions, we can point them to a webpage that specifically talks about why, you know, what this is and...
But a new topic for Speak Up Stillwater.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And honestly, just talking about it here tonight, and Michelle will write about it, so hopefully people will. All right. Any other action on that item, trustees? Thank you, Bill. Oh, you're up again. Bid recommendation, this is item 5D, bid recommendation for WWTP Miscellaneous Improvements Projects, including replacement of the digester A-Lid gas piping system for three digesters, roofing on four buildings, security fencing, mixers for the scum wet well. That sounds like fun. And improving access to and maintenance of the aeration basins. Just to be clear, wastewater treatment plant, WWTP.
Yes, sir. This figure, thanks for the intro. This figure identifies the principal improvements around the wastewater treatment plant. The project also included an automatic transfer switch for the electric service to the whole plant. It happened to be in the admin building, and we've already executed that part of the project. This slide shows some of the photos, and you'll note we did not include the scum mixer. But this is the digester A, and you can see the corrosion to the lid there. That's because of the hydrogen sulfide gas that's created in the digestion process, and that's how corrosive it is. You know, this is quarter or maybe half-inch steel, but that's eaten up, so it's definitely in need of repair.
Bill, is that actually open to... Is that a hole all the way through the lid?
Yes, sir.
So is there hydrogen sulfide gas leaking out of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Talk quick.
The total cost of the project, including contingencies, is estimated to be just under $2.9 million. There is available funding in the wastewater fund, which staff would, upon approval, staff would appropriate administratively. There's the alternatives, and I'd be glad to try to answer any questions, and we'll roll straight to the recommendation, if you prefer. Okay. Staff recommends awarding the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, BRB Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $2.416 million. Authorize staff to execute the construction contract. Authorize staff to procure services for construction inspection in an amount not to exceed $194,250, and authorize $2,871,275 in total project expenditures, including construction, inspection, and 10% contingency. and 10% contingency.
Trustees?
Motion to approve the staff recommendation. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. Please vote. The vote is five to zero. That item is approved. Thank you, Bill. Takes us down to reports. Any reports from anyone here on the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Please vote. The vote is five to zero. The Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. We will now reconvene the city council meeting at item executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session as a stillwater city council. Please vote. The vote is five to zero. We'll now enter executive session.